This document basically has the current administrative rule. Then it has the initial proposal, if I'm getting this correct. And then we have proposed underpinned revisions and suggestions. And these are the items that Drew and Liz and Julie and I met with the NEA, the school, the superintendent's association and Fred and the working group. And we kind of hammered through some definitions and stuff like that. That's in that next column, which is the third column. And then the last is the GELCAR comments. And those are categorized by color. So they're big, you know, some of it's editorial, so that's in pink and we've just updated it. Some it's unclear wording. We've tried to create some potential wording, that's gonna be in green. If there was a question about legislative intent, that's in blue. And if there's a disagreement or an issue that we're not sure that we agree with GELCAR, we put that in purple, but that's how we will decode those as we go through that. And we're literally just gonna kind of walk through these pretty quickly. But then in terms of-
Could I, could I just make a quick comment?
Yeah.
I just wanted to note that some of the changes that were already proposed may have already addressed GELCAR comments. We got the GELCAR comments afterwards. So if there's any questions on whether the reason why it's colored a certain way or why it's, you know, in a category, I can probably explain that. It might have been already addressed through something that the public also wanted changed or changes that they already made.
Okay, thank you. And so then really what I do is I want to kind of set the tone for what it is that we're trying to accomplish here. And I'm gonna turn it over to RSA 193, I, E1, Roman numeral 2, which kind of sets the broad perspective for how we do these rules and the context in which these fit in. "Respecting New Hampshire's long tradition of community involvement, it is the purpose of this chapter to ensure that appropriate means are established to provide an adequate education through an integrated system of shared responsibility between state and local government. In this system, the state establishes minimum standards for public school approval and academic standards for inclusion and delivery of educational services at the local level. School districts then have responsibility and flexibility in implementing diverse educational approaches to instruction and curriculum tailored to meet the students' needs." And so these are the framework, these standards for the school districts that are required by the state, but that allow school districts to have both responsibility and flexibility in implementing diverse educational approaches. And so we want to keep that in mind. Like our goal here is not to make a lockdown, a modus, kind of a system. Ours is to create a framework that enables the school districts to have responsibility, meaning they're gonna be making decisions, and flexibility. And so with that said, I'm gonna jump right in on page one. And I'm gonna suggest that some of these pinks, unless you want to go back through it and change it, we may, we may just accept some of the pinks. So for example, the first one there, you'll see in the second column, we had in our proposal, it said, you know, school, if it contains kindergarten through eight, and they said they wanna say kindergarten through grade eight. So we will just, it's easy, we just add the there. You know, the same thing here, you know, the citations in the applicable rules would be useful. And so we've added, Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but we pretty much just added the citations, I think, right, in the second one.
So that, so that, just literally, you're citing the word?
Yes.
Correct.
And again, so pinks are pretty easy, right? So they, we said CTE, use the exact statutory term. So we're gonna call that current technical education or CTE. On the second, on page two, I'm sorry?
That's all right, we're moving.
You know, at the top, page one, okay. So going down towards the bottom on page two, you know, so we added a two. You know, so competencies means the knowledge and skills a student will be able to apply as a result of a specific set of learning opportunities. And actually, Julie, you might be better equipped to walk through these. You wanna do these, because otherwise I'm gonna be reading so much.
Yeah, I-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say Julie, take it from here.
I, I, I was like a-
Okay, thank you. All right, Julie, like-
And if it's okay too, I know that Phil has his hand raised, so I'll intercede as I see him. So if, if that's okay.
Yes, please do, sorry, Phil, I am flying here.
Yeah, not a problem, right? I feel the need for speed, I get it. But so, I just wanna make sure, the proposed revision, you mentioned a whole bunch of people. Are those the agreed upon revisions by that group of people?
Correct, when we left that meeting, those were all in that third column. The ones that you'll see there were revisions that everybody had agreed to.
So that's gonna be the black writing?
I just wanna make sure they were agreed upon.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Nope, that's fine. And Julie, I have the sheet you sent up, you did it up last time.
No, you need a new one, he, you need this-
There've been significant changes between that version and this one.
Does Phil have the new one? That's what he asked to start.
I don't know if I got it uploaded to Canvas or not, I sent the message to Ken.
This morning?
I did.
Okay, okay.
So Phil, we will send it over, you have-
Can you just email it? I'll, I'll-
Yeah, just email it to him.
I'll send it to you right now, Phil.
Thank you.
No, it's, it's pretty good, I agree with Austin.
Yes.
Yeah, so why, she's got a whole other column and the GELCAR comments.
A whole new column. It's the size.
All right, Julie, now, page two, bottom of the page, edit.
Okay, so yeah, so that was an edit, they just wanted the two in there. However, there's an additional note in terms of the definition of competency. Now, that's something, again, that we had already worked on a revised definition for. But additionally, there is a statutory definition there, and that's in green. And so, you know, the decision is, do we, do we go with that statutory definition? Statutory definition that's in statute and then, you know, cited in fact.
Right, so we had worked with everybody to come up with our own definition, but the legislature has a different definition, so I think we're-
Yeah, and that's very zone of the following.
I think we're stuck with the legislature.
You'll see this, yeah, you'll see the statutory definition on the bottom of the page.
That solves that, answers that question, right?
Yeah, I mean-
I, I would definitely go with the statutory definition, right? I don't wanna get in conflict with that.
Yeah.
All right, it's fairly substantive, any questions about that? Phil, you're good.
And ultimately, that resolves a number of issues that sort of go to the matter.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of comments. Every time that word comes up, there's a comment. So that just eliminates a whole bunch that we really have to talk about, so.
And just to be clear, so we, as a, as an agency, we have the ability to put out a technical advisory. They can say, here's the statutory definition of competency, and there's maybe more of the Aurora Institute and other, you know, more broad understanding of that, so.
Liz, I'll let you take the next one on page four.
So always just specify the page.
Yeah, we're, we're at the bottom of page four. There is an edit in H, that's just quotation marks. Again, I'm just gonna skip over the pinks if, unless someone has a question about it. So we're down to the definition of equity.
All right, so the definition of equity, and if you will see in the second column, it originally had a slightly different definition of equity. The working group had met together and had agreed upon the definition of equity being the practice of designing, programming, distributing resources and implementing policies to individuals or groups of individuals based upon or identify needs in order to adjust not achievement of competencies or with other variables or success. So that was the working group definition. The OLS's comments were that the equity had commonly used definitions and don't need to be defined. And by defining it here, it changes the word and the ruling, what the definition here. And yes, that is in fact what we want to do, is we want to define equity and we want this use of equity to be used throughout the document. And I believe the definition that we agreed upon at the working group reflects the common desire that we want to bring throughout the document. Excuse me, when we have these sorts of things that come up with OLS, we can have conversations with their attorneys and we will discuss this. And that would be my suggestion, is that I have a conversation with them and indicate that this was the desired, a purposeful use of the definition. And that is something that we wanted to carry out through these rules. It was very purposeful, we selected-
It was very important to define it in rule because those commonly used definitions is really incorrect because different people in different organizations use very different definitions. There's not one commonly accepted definition of it. That's why I think we had to, but I, but I think the working group came up with adding groupings of individuals back in satisfied a lot of the concerns about having it only for individuals not being able to use a broader group. So I think that's a good compromise that we came up with.
And again, this compromise, OLS is not aware of this compromise in terms of, I don't know if that would affect their comments or not, but-
It seems like their comment is that there is a common definition and I would probably respectfully disagree with that. And saying that this definition was purposely negotiating and it was discussed and it was intended to be the definition that's used for these rules. And so that's the reason we define things and rules, is because we want those words to be used that way.
So the question is from the board. No, so I think we would work with the working group. I mean, the definition there, I remember columns were-
God, I'm adding.
Okay, so nothing on page five to address. Nothing on page six, given that the comment is regard, regarding the definition of competency, which we addressed.
Right, so every time that, that we used the word competency because ours didn't have the statutory alignment, they've OLS flagged that.
Sorry. So but here with R, is it-
Yes, actually, so I was looking, not, I was only looking at the OLS columns, you're correct. With R for learning opportunities, again, this was a, this was a working group definition that we did not touch. They actually did this in their initial proposal, we didn't do anything to it. But a lot of the public commentary was concerned about this definition. And just a suggestion of adding in-person instruction to that list. People are, are somehow looking at that definition and thinking it was left out intentionally, but it wasn't. And so I don't know if adding that in as a learning opportunity. I think it was, I think people thought it was implied that that was part of it, but-
I think there was, yeah, I think that was just sort of implied that we thought that was included, so I'm happy to put that back in.
And so we would read that learning opportunities means educational experiences, including but not limited to in-person instruction, along with blended else.
Put in person writing prompt.
Yeah, yeah, the intention was not to-
Not to leave it out, is it?
Right, exactly.
Okay, great.
Okay.
So who's gonna be our mastery proficiency conversation?
Yay.
Yes, exactly, this is important conversation. And so let me just share, I actually touched base with Nate this morning. And I know that, you know, Val was part of this conversation of a working group and everybody's pretty much weighed in on this. So these are kind of the minimum standards. And there was a lot of conversation around the idea that, well, proficiency is the minimum standard. Of course, we want our kids to be masters. If you go mastery of content, if I go to V-Lax as an example, so V-Lax uses a competency-based model, they describe students as mastery over the content when they achieve an eighty-five percent or higher. But we know that kids get, get promoted and graduate when they have eighty percent or seventy-five percent, right? So, or seventy or sixty-five sometimes, depending where you are. So our question is, are, we don't wanna be, we're not trying to lower the bar for our students. We want our, all of our students to succeed. But if we, if we put mastery in here, do we actually mean that? That we're not gonna graduate kids that are proficient, but they're not, haven't mastered content? And so-
I wanna hear Raj on this one.
Yeah.
Okay.
But no, so I, I think that anyway, I don't view-
Yeah, no, that's okay, that's, I'm trying to just set you guys up for the conversation and-
So some of the feedback we got for this, for those who, was, our intention here was to make the minimum standards line up with actual industry practice. So we weren't setting a rule that wouldn't, that would be too hard to implement in practice, right? So we didn't want the conflict to be different than what was actually going on in the field. But the feedback we got was, no, what we mean by mastery is master the competencies. And we define that in a certain way, we got that feedback from the field. And Mark did a really good job, I think, in our last meeting explaining why the term mastery would be the appropriate term there. So I'm happy to put mastery back in. If, if, if the people wants mastery in and wants to be, for the minimum standards as master of competencies, that's great. We just didn't want to set them up to fail by setting, you know, by changing, you know, by not aligning the rule with practice.
Where does it state what the minimum, what minimum student performance is?
This is what we do.
This is it?
It's the term mastery, so or proficient.
We say that you have to be proficient at a competency.
So, right, so that's, that's a lovely word.
Ju, Julie has a-
And what does, what does it mean?
And that's what we're trying to get to, is making sure that it, we have a high bar for students. But if the term is-
Proficient means that you sixty percent, proficient means fifty percent, or this?
So Julie, do you have a-
Um, I was just gonna point out that that statutory definition of competencies includes the word mastery in it.
Yeah.
Just-
Sure, no, that's a good point.
You know, coming absolutely fresh to this, I was reading this for the first time ever because I'm pretty new to this. And I got stuck with the same comment. And I Googled what mastery, you know, one says comprehensive knowledge or skills in a subject, that's a mastery. Other one is high degree of competence or skill or expertise. And I said, I don't know the difference yet. And then I Googled a little bit more to see which is which. And if you're defining mastery as, as you said, eighty-five percent, then proficiency as the passing grade, and if you're looking for mastery in everything, I would not appear at my high school.
And that's why, that's my concern. And that's exactly why we wanted proficient, because if proficient is what they, is that minimum bar. But what we're hearing from the field is, no, no, that's not the difference. The difference is, we say master, we just, that's how we define had, we use the term mastery to say master the competency, but it doesn't mean you score a hundred on every test, right? So that's what we're hearing from the feedback. So if they're comfortable with mastery being in the rule and they want mastery in the rule to have a high bar.
That's potential, absolutely, yeah.
I, I'm not opposed to it, I just wanna make sure we're not setting up a situation where a kid is gonna be held back because there's a conflict with the rule and, and it just gets to, you know, there's a difference in the expectations in practice versus the rule. So, but I'm, I'm, I'm happy to set the bar higher.
Your first question.
Like that, that is something I would love to see. Go ahead, Phil.
So I wonder if it's the definition of mastery of proficiency that we get clarity here, right? So I know proficiency is not, I don't believe it's in the list of defined terms, right, Julie?
It is, this is the definition, that's what we're referring to, this is the definition.
Mastery, oh, oh, that's right, you had proficiency, got it. So I think there is literature out in the world that would say that mastery within the competency-based education space is multiple demonstrations of proficiency. So I wonder if we look at our, like, term mastery, if we're saying you're mastering, it's not just like, hey, you did it once, you demonstrated proficiency once, but multiple demonstrations of proficiency in the competence, just a thought.
I mean, it's too bad Mark's not here yet, because I think he had a really-
He'd be here at eleven.
He, he had a really good way to explain.
He's coming at eleven, he has something to say.
I mean, you wanna, and get back to it, because I'm totally open to making it mastery. I think that's-
Okay, so we'll go to the next one.
We just, we skipped one, hold on one second. We skipped, personally, is learning, which was F. And just for purposes of making sure the state board is aware that that is one that we discussed in that working group.
And there was a GELCAR comment, and I've documented here, so I apologize for that. Because we'd already fixed it through the working group changes. But they, essentially, initially, we had used the word crafting and they said, you know, that makes it very kind of narrow as far as what that means.
Again, page four.
And we had already, yes, sorry, bottom of page six, sorry, six. And so we had already talked with the working group and changed it to mean learning opportunities shaped by the learner's interests.
Okay, hold on, so let me just-
So P at the bottom of page six.
So, yeah, I remember that discussion, that-
And I think that addresses OLS's concern with the definition as well as-
So I remember in that conversation about that definition, the reason we went responsive to instead of shaped by, is because we wanted to give the teacher, right, and, and the student's team, the ability to, to say no, right? To have agency in there too. We didn't want the student to just say, I get to-
It's the only way I'm gonna do it.
Yeah, and, and not have the team saying, no, you need to listen to us, as the professional educators, we're not gonna, you can't just do anything you want.
Oh, did we just, were we, can we ask responsive to?
That's why we chose those words.
That's why we did responsive to, so did they?
They didn't catch that nuance.
Yeah, so I guess-
Well, their issue was using the word crafting, which we had decided we weren't going to be-
Crafting, okay.
I mean, you could just leave out that, present is learning means, learning opportunities responsive to.
Right.
And just leave crafting out, we'd be fine with GELCAR.
Okay, I mean, if you can take out crafting.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure we're not telling the teachers they don't have a role here and they have to just do what the student says.
So we'll just take out crafting then on that one. Okay, thanks for catching on this.
All right.
Okay, so now we're back over on the definition B of rigor, on page seven.
So we took this out because it's not actually used anywhere in the rule with this rules. And so therefore, it shouldn't be in the definitions. And, but people want that word in there. And so that would be a matter of finding a, if we want it defined, finding a place where it belongs in the rule, but that's kind of where that is right now.
X, I mean, I, I guess it's kinda silly to have a definition that's not anywhere else in the rule. However, I think this right, takes the opportunity to raise the question, do we wanna put it back in the rule, do we wanna have it in?
Where does it belong?
If it's, if it's one of those things that's giving a lot of people heartburn, we want the rules to be rigorous, find having an appropriate place to have it.
Where does rigor fall into the conversation between mastery and proficiency?
That's, that's, that's a big part of the conversation, right?
So do we wanna put a pin into a markham?
I mean, I think, I just don't recall the actual line of what it was, but-
I don't think it was.
And, well, it was there previously.
I'm not sure was def, was it defined?
It was not defined.
That was around, the word, the word was in there, but there was no definition for it. And it was again, one of those things where, if I remember correctly, there was sort of like, we, everybody wants rig, we have mastery, right?
Julie, can you quickly tell us where rigor appeared originally?
Phil has his hand there.
Um, I can, I, it might take me a minute to find it, but I, if you give me that minute, I will find it.
Okay, well, if Phil go on your looking.
Yeah.
So I think rigor might, like, when you have competency-based education under CDE, it talks about mastery and proficiency, rigor talks about like the structure of a curriculum, right? Like, and like the dislike, what, the quality of a curriculum. So it's almost antithetical within CDE conversations, rigor talks about demonstrated mastery of proficiency, to then talk about in specific terms, like how you're like the rigor of the content you're building in order to get them there. Does that make sense? I think you just had a conversation, like, how to make a decision, how to integrate the mastery of proficiency.
Yeah, to me, they're complementary, more than in conflict, is how I-
I think the rigor talks about the learnings, like the, the quality of the learning experience, right? Like whereas the mastery of proficiency is like, hey, you've measured something.
Yeah, but I think they're complementary class, so totally, totally.
Would rigor also mean anything to do with the testing side?
Or it could, under this definition, the depth at which the demonstration of competencies is measured.
Yeah, that's why I felt, I thought it was leading towards the measurement of the testing rather than the treatment.
I, I agree, that, it's, and, and as Phil said, rigor is, is the standard or the level at which you're, that which you have to master to achieve mastery, I guess. That didn't make much sense.
No, I get what you're saying, I, I love-
It, it's, it is not something that an individual has control of. It's controlled by the environment, the learning environment.
Mark, isn't that part of what, what we're setting the rules for, is to say, like, your course content, your measurements, they should be rigorous?
With that, so with the definition says means that which-
But proficiency is, is a measurement of what the student can do. And rigor is the level that the educator or the environment, the educational environment establishes.
Right, and I think, but the feedback we got from the field is, we wanna make sure that that is at a high, it gets rigorous, it's at a high level. I think there's some concern that some school boards will, you know, try to get away with less rigorous content. I'm, I'm open to-
But really, the proficiency is your mastery, um, did, Julie, did you find your ideas?
Yeah, so it was in a couple places. So it was previously listed in part of a policy for ELOs, and that was rigorous. So it said, requires that each extent of learning proposal be rigorous measurable standards and be approved by the school prior to its beginning. And then the other two spots, it was in graduation requirements. So right now, it's three, it's in three oh six oh twenty-one, I believe. What would, would have been H now is J. But it used, there was a piece that said, the credit shall equate to the level of rigor and achievement necessary to master competencies that have been designed to demonstrate the knowledge and skills necessary to progress towards college level and career work. It's a lot of words, so I-
It's a lot of words, but I-
And then the last piece had to do with, it was, where the, the minimum, or the graduation requirements. So the rigor and number of graduation competencies shall align with the equivalent of the credits as outlined. So the rigor of, the number of credits essentially should reflect the rigor of the course.
Sure.
Rigor showed up in a couple of other spots. One was under three oh six oh two in the definition of current technical education. Require the sequence of courses that provides a measure of the rigorous content.
So I think if I go to, Julie, the, the place where it seems most substantively used is in the J that you referenced, right? And so now that language says, credits shall be awarded for achievement of competencies. And this goes to the other point, Phil, right? Credits shall not be awarded on time spent achieving these competencies. And then it had something beyond that which has been struck, is says, the credit shall equate to the level of rigor and achievement necessary for the mastery of competencies. So it's sort of like a leaning in on that, that concept about how you get there a little bit to what Phil was saying, I think.
But, but we, we have a, we have a, a level of mastery.
Proficiency or mastery, or, yeah.
Whatever we wanna call it.
Yeah.
And yet that student got there without taking a rigorous class and they still mastered the material, however they mastered it.
But I think it's, I think it's-
Well, rigor is, is a, is a level of expectation.
It's both, Dan, right? So it's-
As in a-
Oh, oh, oh.
So having that phrase in there to say, hey, the, the content that is offered, 'cause look, we have lots of different ways you can get there and learn the content. But the content that's offered has to be rigorous. I don't know, I don't, I, I see that as complementary, as saying, well-
That's it.
In other words, it doesn't do any harm to have it in there, I don't think.
So you have a spot where you'd like it?
I don't wanna just-
We can go find it, we can find a spot for you, okay.
In other words, I, I think it's okay reassurance just to say, look, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a definition of rigor, we're gonna put it back in there and just to make sure that everybody's comfortable with saying that, hey, the content that's offered, that is public schools offer, has to, has to be rigorous. And, you know, that's gonna be something that school districts, schools boards are gonna have to-
Or among, among the offerings, that rigor needs to be an option. I, I don't think that, otherwise you're putting this, this burden that everything has to be rigorous. And that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily-
It's not a flexible system.
Right.
Well, I mean, I think if everything's right, so, people are gonna disagree on what, how rigorous something is, right? So we see this with the learning programs, we see this with all kinds of stuff. Is that really rigorous? Is that, I think that's gonna be disagreed on about, even with the definition of this being rigorous. Anyway, look, I'm open to putting it back in, I don't think it hurts.
We will find a spot.
Yeah, I know, I, I don't, I don't remember, I'm confused, but, but I-
Just as a reassurance that, look, we, we do wanna have high standards for what the content that's out there, right? We don't wanna, I'm okay with that, I don't think it-
Okay.
So the measurement would be on the proficiency versus comfort and mastery, not on the rigor or the treatment.
Exactly, that's Phil's point, yes.
Yeah, but again, it's like a big compliment to her. So we'd be telling in the rule the districts, look, you have to come up with rigorous programs. Like you can't just have, you know, really crappy programs, but high standards on testing. You have to come up with rigorous programs too, but I think that's not fine with that.
Okay.
I wonder if it's into like the conversation around like how you demonstrate mastery? It's be like, you turn the term to talk about like, it was like, that it's a rigorous demonstration, right? That it's not just like that.
Well, I think that, I think that, and I can be misreading, but I think the feedback we're getting is, we want a rule to say, look, the content that's provided has to be rigorous.
Yeah.
I, I think that's what we're pushing towards here, so let's just bookmark that and see.
Okay, we got that, we got a spot there. Okay, X, so work-study practices comes on page seven. And I'm, the X is referencing, it's R, but it's an X in the second column. And we had just said, work-study practices means, and these are right out of statute, but the OLS comment was that we should- And we had, um, just said work study practices means, and these are right out of statute, but the OLS comment was that we should take the statutory definitions and stick them in the rules?
Like each one individually instead of within work study practices embedded in there, if that makes sense?
Each one individually rather than just reference the law. Silly, isn't it, yes, everyone's too, whatever.
Well, they pick up their mind, whether they want us to cite the statute or write the whole statute in the rule. Can we just have one of them?
Okay.
I mean, I I think.
They like us to cite the statute and rule, but I think here they just, rather than citing it within another definition, they just want us to define each of those words since they're.
Okay.
We'll just use the statute.
I think it's because of your definitions, it's different than another bo- part of the body of the.
Yeah, okay.
I guess, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, through six point oh three, Julie.
Um, this one, um, they just made a comment that the section doesn't talk about policy requirements and it's correct. This section, um, was called statutory policy requirements, it was always called that.
Right.
But when you look at it, you're like, oh, you know what, this is just saying that they have to follow statutes and so it's a big fix pretty easily by just changing the title there.
Yeah.
Um, Liz, do you wanna talk about the number?
Still on page seven B.
Yeah.
State federal law.
Statutory.
I can jump in, so this is basically, so we had, you know, for a school board to be approved school under these rules, the school board shall apply with all federal state laws and rules.
Yeah.
And, um, so they're saying, are there federal laws? And of course there are federal laws, but this is your state rule relative to compliance with the states. So we have tried to minimize pulling in all of the federal schema that also districts are responsible to comply with depending upon the funds that they take and the government that they're enrolled in.
Sure.
So we're just leaning at a state, so.
But that doesn't change their, they're still required to follow.
Correct, they have to follow.
Doesn't change that.
Nothing really is the requirements to follow federal or state law in these rules.
No matter what we say in here, right, right?
Correct.
So this is state rules.
These are minimums, minimums. Okay, I think the next thing we move to is promoting school safety at the bottom of page eight. Um, there was unclear regarding whether or not school property included school buses.
Mm-hmm.
Um, interesting enough, there is no definition in statute regarding school property that is a, uh, global statute. There's two single purpose statutes, one in drug free school zones and the other in health and safety statutes that define school properties. So we're gonna define the school property as based upon both of those stat- special purpose statutory definitions, so one ninety three D one five and R S A one ninety three F three five, which means that it'll include all school property as you would imagine, including playground and school buses.
Do we have anything on the purple unclear that would address that too?
And then the the would address that, all right, school activities.
That takes care of them. Addresses, okay, field.
Well, the school trips are going to jury, school authorized activities, a field trip is a school authorized activity, we can explain that.
Okay. Page nine. Okay, we agree.
All right, do you wanna talk about this in general? Um, discipline, okay, so, um, the discipline, number three, they had some concern regarding paragraph B, whether or not the, um, discipline policies was available in written oral form for students, parents and guardians. Um, between English and the second language whenever necessary, so the OLS was concerned this was unclear. Uh, they were concerned that there the school could have an oral unwritten discipline policy. Um, or this would impact the S L persons in conflicts with the introduction and was unclear whenever necessary. We worked on this a little bit, we also realized that maybe one thing that wasn't included here was A D A concerns. And so we wanted to make sure that the discipline policy was written and was also verbal so we could make sure that individuals with, um, disabilities or E S L parents would be able to access.
It's a better, it changes better. Accessible, right?
Because because it's something that's illiterate, they gotta be able to access policies differently.
We wanna make sure that parents, sorry, we we wanna make sure that parents can have it available and they can understand it.
Yeah, no, I think the next one, the the green version is much better.
The one.
Yeah, that's much clearer.
Okay, we just have a nine distinct edits, so on page ten, we've just got a couple of edits. And then number five, character and citizenship, so we have re, you know, based on the OLS comments, we've worked through that a little bit. Tried to basically use the direct language from the constitution.
Um, yeah, so they the the OLS comments regarding this was they were concerned that if it's implied that all it required was the educator to be in good sense and they didn't have to instruct and that, and of course, that is not the case. So we tried to, um, understand OLS's comments, but we also looked and, um, we we, um, wrote this just a little bit carefully tracking the provisions of the state constitution. Um, and I believe if you look there in green, we tried to make sure that we, um, fulfilled the intent of the language but also addressed OLS's comments to try to clear it up a little bit as to what, um, those character and citizenship goals were for the public school students.
Okay. Uh, yeah, that was a good catch on that board there, yeah, on that part, it was.
Well, we read it and we thought that's a pretty easy fix if you just change it to and.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, on the next page on page eleven, that's just a continuation of that same comment and we addressed that by by taking out B so that it was no longer an issue, um, the consultation and what that involves and who's involved.
Um, I think just, I think maybe just as an important point is, um, so basically this required policy to be developed in consultation with school staff, administration, parents and other representatives, you know, Julie, an extraneous phrase, that's how school policies should be done. But also how school policy is done is done according to local school district policy. So each school district has a policy of how they create their own internal policies and that's where these issues should be addressed, is that the local school district is at fault. Okay, so.
You've been there.
Number six, page eleven.
Um, this was, this was a comment, um, on a cross out, um, saying, you know, do they no longer need to develop this? Um, and we removed it because it was redundant, it's it's in multiple places, um, that meaning the instructional needs of each individual student is going to be in various parts of policies and, um, and all that, so that's why it was removed. Um, it's not because they don't need to include it in policy, if that makes sense.
Sure, I mean, is there some old rule that's about needing the instructional needs of individual students, right? Um, yes, pretty clear meaning that it's in that that's what the whole unwritten zone pages is designed to do.
Agreed. All right, so we are, um.
Page thirteen.
Page thirteen, um, again, um, we actually already kind of spoke to this in terms of the federal, um, regulations and laws. Um, and it wasn't removed because it's no longer a law or because it's no longer needed. Um, but it is federal law that they have to have a wellness policy at the local school district.
And and generally speaking, like, and this is philosophical, I showed this with you, is I try not to cite somebody else's rule set when I'm making my rules because essentially what I'm doing that is ceding my rule, making authority to them, because then when they change that rule, then on subject to whatever they've changed it to. Like if we need a rule, we should make a rule rather than delegate that responsibility to someone else.
That's, this is number.
On page thirteen, number one, you have.
It's the highest, yep. And that federal statute that they're requiring is actually came about in two thousand four, two thousand five and basically required local school district policy, if local school district policies regarding health and wellness, which they all have in place at this point, it's twenty years ago.
Hmm.
Um, all right, so again, we can skip fourteen because it's talking about.
Yeah, I follow. No, I just, I I I mean, I get where people will come from if it's. It's back in that discussion of, hey, look, federal law requires this, so they get that direction from the federal government, they don't need to write it from there. Or is there still required to follow the federal law? Right, um, but on the other hand, we get people to only read these rules, we go, why are you taking that out? We're not changing the requirement, this doesn't change anything that requires you, right? Right, they still have to follow the federal law, so we're not.
It is federal.
I'm not meaning to, right, so just in other words, the this, the minimum standard is not clinging to that federal statute doesn't in any way change their obligation to follow the federal statute, so like I don't quite get it, but how about it's not.
And those receipt a federal.
There's not a, there's more just they were questioned, questioning, yeah.
No, it's a larger.
Yeah.
Yes.
Not. It's in cognitive. So the only comment on fourteen again is, um, regarding the definition of competencies, so we can skip over that unless anyone has any major questions or issues with that particular.
They're gonna fix their definition of competence.
Sure.
Do you wanna talk about this one?
I can talk to this, cause I spoke with Jeff, so this was, it was concern.
Yeah. This is page fifteen, by the way.
How credit is awarded to students based upon demonstration of achievement of competencies regardless of age and enrollment status. And so a concern was brought up in public comment about how this change affects CTE courses enrollment status and they were concerned about completers. So I did talk to Jeff Beard, who is our acting director over at CTE and is not a problem for reporting under Perkins, the federal grant relative to completers or concentrators, those two different categories that you report under the Perkins grant. Um, so I I think, um, so in other words, like, so there was a public comment that was raised about this and, but I think we looked at the federal statute and wrote that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Uh, if we're going seventeen and eighteen, it says achievement of competencies, should we, is achievement of competency? Or should we be continuing to flag it around efficiency or mastery?
We were using achievement consistently throughout and that one spot, we missed it, um, and so it should be.
So we did fix a few, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there anything else on eighteen or do we? So.
Page eighteen.
We're we're skipping forward quite a bit now, um. Um, if you wanna go to page twenty one, I can briefly, um, touch upon this where they said it needs a citation. Um, we will put a citation back in once we've resolved what that citation is because, you know, we took those out
Yeah.
because we split it up into two proposals. Once we have renumbered and done all of that, we will cite to it, um, but it was taken out because I didn't know what that citation was going to be. Um, do you wanna talk about the next one or do you want to skip it?
What was this, one of the, one of the.
So where are you guys? You got a, what's the page and it's.
Bottom of page twenty one, we're looking at, uh, three oh six oh six regarding culture and climate. Um, and the OLS's comment was, um, unclear regarding R S A one eighty nine one C and, uh, R S A one ninety, one ninety three twenty three F is been cited for this and doesn't talk about a student having this on the school board. Okay, so I think they were, I think they had some concerns regarding the, um, citations that we were using on the table for this.
The appendix.
The, or the, in the appendix, um, thanks, so, um.
And so can I just explain what that means at least?
It goes to paragraph three, so, um, I think that this is, so one of the things is student leadership through involvement and decision making. And the statute that was cited is the statute that requires a school board to have a high school member serve on the school board. And my interpretation of this is I think that that person is typically the student body president or somebody that's on involved in student body either the delegate that ends up being on the school boards, so sometimes they are, they don't have to be.
Always, no. Does it have to be? Yeah.
But but I don't necessarily, because it can be, doesn't necessarily mean that that should not be included in the appendix for something that can support that rulemaking or.
So let me just, can I just like, I'm gonna back up, because I'm not sure that they have all the context, so in every one of these rules, we have another section in in the back where we have to state cite a statutory authority for making the rule, right? Like, we're not allowed to just make up rules capriciously, we have to have legal authority. When we cite that we, the student leadership through involvement, we cite the statute that requires a student to be on the school board. Um, with the premise that that having a student on the school board actually helps the culture and climate of the school, and so we think it does. They're saying like, well, how does this statutory thing help the culture and climate of the school? And we think when you have student representation on the school board, it does help though.
But the type of definition is not exclusive, like it doesn't say.
It's kind of, it's a very.
Student leadership through involvement and decision making can be the student who, for whatever mechanism they have locally winds up on the school board, it doesn't.
Yeah, it does not exclusively.
It can be more things, but but at least it includes that, that's what I'm trying to say, like, we have to have at least some statutory basis for saying that.
It's not. No, but what I'm saying is the way we've got it phrased is broadly includes.
It's exceptionally not, and it could be, it could be how they make decisions, and it has no, could have nothing at all to do with the school board.
Just like. All kinds of things, basically, okay.
It may be the student involvement in how the local decisions are made, or like, are we gonna have a spirit day on Friday? Are we gonna wear red or blue? Um, and so I think that we can address this, um, by maybe adding a judicial, looking at the, uh, uh, appendix if there's anything else that we could add for this, but because this is a subset of three does not mean that it's an incorrect citation to cite from three.
No, I mean, it's, you're requiring the culture of the school to include student leadership through involvement and decision making, it's pretty open ended.
And this, yes, and the state board has broad willing to include in this area.
Right, it's not.
Okay.
I I think it seems.
They they have a question about the way we use equitable.
Equ- equitable, but that was intentional use, so I think we can, we will address that in further conversation.
We think that fits exactly. Well, we think that's the appropriate use of our definition of equity and equitable, right?
Yeah, like we don't need some, what's your your dictionary definition, this is, we mean this to be our definition, so, you know.
Can we also define the school board a little more, is it at the school level, city level, state level?
We cite the local school board definition in statute, so, uh, yeah.
Yes, in statute.
Okay, so it's a local school.
So local, yes.
Local school bar gas.
Okay, so.
I think we're going six oh seven, or did I just skip something? No, mine ones skip them.
So, yeah, my head knows, uh, twenty three.
Oh, this was they, this, oh, we're looking at twenty three.
Can you give us a page?
Page twenty three, there was a comment that, oh, did this get moved somewhere else? Yes, it did, um, it was in the rulemaking notice, um, we did not get rid of, um, school facility requirements. There are new rules in the three twenty, they're much more comprehensive than what was here previously and they include all of that information. And so it just cites back to that now, um, so it it's not that they don't have to follow school facility approval requirements, they're just in a different place.
But that's what we still.
What's that? Uh, yes, exactly.
We may not cite that, yes.
Just twenty four.
Just twenty four. Um, so if we look at, um, section three oh six oh eight, which was previously titled instructional resources and now is how to learning resources. There's a lot of public comment on this in addition to some OLS comments here, um, with, you know, we define instruction, we do not define learning resources. What are they, how are they different from instructional resources? Um, again, this is something where this was, I think the the working group was working on this because they wanted it to be learner focused. It wasn't trying to water down or remove anything, um, and, you know, there was a suggestion that we, you know, do learning and instructional resources. We're not trying to take anything away, um.
I think the and sounds fine, you know.
And so the only aspect is it dilutes a little bit, we can, you know, there's like, learning resources is focused on the learner, learning and instructional resources is focused on the learner and instruction, so, okay.
Here, this is a close look.
Okay.
So the next one, um, they didn't know what, um, they wanted a a definition for developmentally appropriate. Um, and so we've listed one there, um, if there's any comments on, you know, if that is inclusive of everything we want there. But it it probably is, it does get used several times throughout the proposal and so it makes sense to have it as a definition.
But this is one that you might wanna look at. But this is one that you might wanna look at and have discussions whether, because this is super important, developmentally appropriate comes up in a number of different ways. Especially when we're referring to appropriate curriculum, appropriate reading materials, appropriate access in libraries. So it's when it probably were the state board to just take a pause and make sure that we capture all of the elements that the state board would like to address in the definition of developmentally appropriate.
I think that's a pretty good definition for a start. Agreed?
We worked on it.
Yeah, we did. Yes, and I'm sure we can just put a pen in it to focus the worth of attention on going forward since we're just seeing this for the first time.
Right, yeah, of course. Phil has his hands up, so maybe he has some wisdom.
Go ahead, Phil.
I'm just checking for mine. The the old, I like, I like it, but I like the cognitive, emotional, social, physical age. Like as we consider that like developmental stages are different from person to person, and would there be any, wouldn't we consider maybe removing age?
I mean, we do have stage of development, so.
Let's flag that for further discussion. Cause I see what, I see what you're saying.
Let's look at literal interpretations down the line, post outs.
Yeah, no, I I see what you're saying there. I. I think I kinda like age in there, but I'm open to talk about it.
Is that a contradiction or is that a repetition? Is what's the problem with that having.
I think what Phil is saying is if you have their cognitive, emotional, social and physical abilities and their development, stage of development, that those would. Be a, they didn't incorporate age.
Casualty.
Okay, great.
Because age is a, it's almost like doing about grades, right? Age is a hard line and every, not every kid at the same age is at the same level of development.
Okay.
So.
That's what I was thinking, exactly.
Right, um but but I wouldn't take it out now, but I would flag it for.
And I think a reason why you wouldn't wanna take it out is it is a um while all the others are fluid, it isn't. And from from an educator's standpoint, I I think having that as a variable that if if a child is twelve years old and they haven't, they haven't mastered the things they should master by the time they're twelve years old.
So it. Yeah. Well, it's also.
Not having that as part of the child's profile, I I think is is a mistake.
Oh, and and also I think age, just for purpose of just talking out loud here, um it's a good proxy, right? Because if you have a class full of eighteen kids, each one of those kids is gonna be able to make a range of development um at at development, right? But you can simply say, okay, you're all twelve years old or twelve to eleven, whatever. So this book is not appropriate for your age group or this instruction method or something, right? So it's a, we already use it as a proxy in the school system now, I think I'm a little hesitant to take it out although, because since we are talking about classrooms which have many kids of multiple abilities. So let's, let's just flag that definition to come to think about. Maybe ways to tweak it.
My last thing, uh I think it's been used as a proxy, absolutely, so I'm proposing potentially it's an imperfect proxy.
It is.
Developmental, people develop at different paces and that like you think about maybe multiple classrooms, you think about uh other ways to like, you know, it takes up the Judy Howzers, right? Like it was like, well, you're only a soul, you gotta stay right here as opposed to considering most developmentally appropriate for each individual.
But I think. Right, but but I think my point is, uh we don't yet, the schools don't necessarily yet. Um and maybe at some point, maybe decades, they will group kids by really by their developmental stage and not by age. Or right now, it's kind of the way we quit. Um anyway.
I I feel if if, I feel if others, other factors are not known, you can always default to age. So having age is, I think it's important because you don't know the rest of the developmental stages and levels, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good proxy.
Nothing else, you can always default to age.
Yeah, alright, well let, let, let's just make sure everybody comes back and just like bookmark that definition in your head as something that you'll be thinking about. But I think it's a good start for the.
So the thought that I had was that it's a little bit like the way we include the word group and equity, that there's some kind of a wide group people and age is an easy grouping.
Right. Yeah. Well, we do that, I mean, for example, sex education, right? Because usually school districts would say, okay, at this grade we introduce it because, right? You might have some kids in that class whose parents can say, he's not ready, but it's a, but it's a good proxy rather than having to say, okay, let's test each individual kid for their development abilities. Like we kind of need to use age as a proxy in a lot of situations, so. And that could even be for movie night at, at your elementary or middle school, you know? So, okay, let's just.
Boy, this is a hard chat, I I decided this is a rough morning to to be doing this because I keep getting like, do you have the next one? Okay, so I'm sorry, I think I.
Remember I told you as they keep this rolling.
I don't work as, I don't run as fast as Frank does unfortunately, Mr. runs much faster than I do. Okay, so the the issue here was the OLS's comment was um we removed the citation to the American Library Association.
Two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five, super updated um version. So they said it's unclear how they were gonna, am I on a long one?
No, you're on a. There's two citations.
Yeah, so they're they're unclear how school libraries are gonna meet this, what is the expectations and do, materials and libraries no longer to meet this standard. And I would say, yes, that's correct, that we are no longer going to require them to meet that particular standard. Um what they are required to do is meet the standard that's set forward in laws. And RSA one eighty-six eleven uh nine C requires school district to adopt policy allowing exceptions, okay, I'm not, I'm trying to remember. So I think there's a couple of issues here, now that I make sure. So first is, we took out this citation to the American Library Association and that was intentional. Okay, number one is, if a school district decided that they wanted to rely upon those standards, they could do that by adopting that as their policy. There is nothing that prohibits that and if they want to use those standards sort of as a proxy of developing their own individual standards.
Oh, it's been many years, right, so I assume the ALA will at some point update that to two thousand and five.
One would hope, um but you know.
Twenty, twenty.
Right, twenty, right, twenty, nineteen, sorry.
But it has, it, but but it certainly has been a while. So I think they they were certainly would be allowed to um to do so. Um and then, okay, and then I think they had a concern regarding um that the materials were going to be organized and accessible to students, staff and parents. Um and um the reason that that and parents language is there is because, well, it, because I think it's implied by a state law.
Yeah.
Is because one eighty, one eighty-six eleven, the part of school district to adopt policies that allow parents to opt out of certain course material. And parents can't opt out if they don't know what materials are actually available. And so making those accessible to parents, that and that accessibility can be done online, however it is done. But they have to be capable of making an informed decision about what they want their students to be able to participate in. They can't do it if it's not accessible.
Yep.
So we're just gonna add that to the appendix, so we can cite to that first, because I don't think it was there before we did sit. Um on page twenty-five, um this was, this was just something caught while reading the draft. Based on what we've defined learning opportunities to be, I don't think that's the language that we want to use and see here. Um because those things listed below are not learning opportunities.
So we should just say integrated following across the regular areas.
Right. Which is an easy fix, just take out learning opportunities, but um the, I I think the intention there, I understand what the intention was, but then after reading it, it didn't make a lot of sense. Alright, page twenty-six. Um here, um we had removed the word written because we thought it was implied that a plan would be written. Um but um they, you know, they're unclear about how this would happen if something wasn't written. And so, you know, the word plan is used numerous times throughout the proposal and so we thought maybe we define the word plan. Um and so what we have is means a written document that outlines specific goals, objectives or desired outcomes. We checked it with all the various ways that we use plan in the proposal and it makes sense. So that again, now when you see the word plan, you know that it's, it's something that's written.
I think we'll just have to use common sense and what the second grade teacher says, I plan to take the kids out on the playground for the next hour and a half that they don't have to create a written plan.
Three oh six oh nine is the same, that was your comment was that they've been, uh they've been moved or they no longer required, have they been moved to the same three twenty rules? So that's taken care of.
Page twenty-eight. Um again, on page twenty-nine, were these requirements moved elsewhere? Are they no longer required? Yes, they were moved and um some of them are not in the rule anymore because again it's applicable. Um but if you look at the food and nutrition section, that's where some of this stuff was moved. Now, I'm gonna go to page thirty-two. Um. So yeah, so here there was um an edit or an unclear saying, we'd love to be, language in there that said class size requirements, um we changed that to student educator ratios. So we fixed that. Um but I also just wanted to point out here that there was a lot of public comments on this and I traced it back to, I think it's this. Um there was no direct citations in any public comment, but there was a lot of comments saying we removed requirements for um art, music, health and physical education teachers. And the only thing I can think is that in five, um again, if you look at five in the original, it says educators including art, music, health and physical education teachers. And we just changed it to educators. Now, I don't know if we wanna put something back in there, I mean, all of the required course areas, they have to have teachers teaching those courses. Um and so again, it should be implied that those classes are gonna be taught, but um.
I think it was unclear why they called out educators including, because that means that every, all the other educators plus these, so we just turned it.
Those, so.
Cause all of those are are required in an adequate level of education, they're listed out in sections.
They're all. They're, they're listed out in sections and they're called educators.
Yes.
We don't have a different.
Well, the, it doesn't talk about educators, it talks about the areas that are required to be taught.
Right, and they're required to be taught.
Yeah.
So we're not taking it out.
Right.
We had a section that was redundant, because it included people who are already included under the definition of educator. Okay.
I wonder, I wonder the initial intention of that.
What's that, Phil?
Was, sorry, I said, I wonder if the initial intention of the original version of having those in there is that those are classes that might be so inclined to have larger uh teacher-student ratios. Right, did that, right? Like, like trying to get more than like.
Or not, or maybe initially they weren't classified as educators.
Possibly as well, right?
At some point, right?
I do think that listing them separate does not necessarily, like, I don't think, I think it's redundant, right? Like, so I'm with that, it's like to understand like we're not eliminating that requirement, that we're just like including them in the definition of educator.
Right, they're, they're already in the definition of educator.
Exactly.
And. They're educators, the courses are required, so removing them from that parenthetical does not eliminate the requirement to offer those classes for to have educators teach those classes.
We don't believe so.
Alright. Yeah.
No, as long as if you can maintain the co, required course areas, that covers, if we were to change that and say this is no longer required for graduation, then it would be.
But if you eliminate art, then you wouldn't need art teachers, air educators to teach art.
Right, so.
Right, I heard it's required, so we're not doing that.
No.
Okay.
So are we defining it elsewhere?
What, what. Yeah, so this basically says, so the definition used to say educators comma, including, uh you know, for all these subject areas. We're just taking out that parenthetical because they're already required subject areas, so they're already included.
But I think the question was, is the definition of the word educators, is it for required and non-required or is it really for required?
It, it says it, uh, can you explain that?
The definition of educators is not going to go into the topics that are drawn. You have educator defined, it just lists out your teachers, parent educators, like all the people that qualify as educators. But um in this section, if you look at A, it's, so it's saying the local school board child required that each school provides. And then at the bottom, educators in accordance with class size requirements. So enough educators to meet the requirements that are set forward. And just previously, and it included those specific subjects.
Right, so if you look, uh if you look back to the left, far left hand side, the original language was educators including art, music, health and physical education teachers.
In line.
Mm-hmm.
So we took that out because they're already included and educators.
No, but.
Some people thought we meant that they were no longer requiring of the subjects.
No, but our, our def, the past discussion was required, the, the courses was not required, I don't know what I'm not.
These are required courses, they are, they are still required courses.
So the educators primarily also teach, but required.
Exactly, they definitely framework.
So that is a definition I was asking, is it, you know, are arts substitute teachers also considered educators who just walk in there for half a day or something like that?
So substitutes is a whole separate definition, it's, because there are substitutes that are used.
Yeah. Okay.
And but you could have substituted math, I just wouldn't preclude that.
Okay, yeah, and so if if that was the definition bringing in is required, was this not required, then can you define it that way or? Otherwise, anyone who teaches, educators mean that anyone who teaches has.
Well, educators are certified educators, it's.
Yeah, so and.
It's twice as actually, yeah.
And I think it's important just to go back, because we're going really fast. The um initial proposal, we changed the definition of educator, we we got a much more robust definition than what's in our current rules. So educator now means administrators, educational specialists, instructional specialists, teachers, parent educators, educator, translators, translators, school nurses and any other individuals credentialed, to your point, by the state board of education. So I think that because we improved the definition of educator, now allows us to remove number five.
Exactly, yeah.
I don't know why you need the including parenthetical.
Yeah, then you don't need that, as long as it's defined uh.
It's a much more robust definition of educator in the current version versus the old, versus the old rules.
Yeah, so so that was the only question, is it defined somewhere, how is it, we are okay?
So, on the same topic, if we go down to the bottom of page thirty-five, student educator ratios. And um the, this goes over, overflowed onto twen, thirty-six, I'm sorry, thirty-five into thirty-six. So again, in reading the public comment, there was lots and lots of public comment on this topic. And then you can see here that there is also um OLS comments in terms of unclear and inadequate fiscal impacts. And then lastly, it says contrary to public interest, the proposed rule cannot be uniformly applied once it is adopted because it cannot be uniformly enforced. And so there is some um language there that's been suggested. Again, this is something that I think you'll wanna come talk about and agree thoroughly and um.
So essentially in that language, the suggested language is the attempt is to try and capture all of the public feedback relative to this, right? I mean, in the conversation that I've had many times when I've had to um uh deal with this is, like I tell you, if you're starting out to instruct something, the first question you ask is not, how many kids should I put in the classroom? You first figure out like, you know, what am I gonna be teaching? You know, what is my instructional method? What is the characteristics of the kids that I'm teaching? And then you might say, how many of them can I go work together in order to, you know, teach their, teach that subject, right? Cause that would be the, you know, as an educator, that would be the process that you would go through to figure out how many kids you should have in a class, right? Because you, and it can go both ways, you could have a rogue school board that says, we're gonna put fifty kids in every class, right? That's what the concern, everybody's concerned about that. You know, the flip side of that is, you could say, well, the minimum class size is twenty-four and you have some school districts that put twenty-four, you know, struggling readers and from second grade into your classroom. And that would be too many for that particular environment, right? So is there, so there's, there's that aspect. The other is, uh you know, we wanna make sure that it's a safe environment, although our facilities takes care of. So is there, so there's there's that aspect, the other is, uh you know, we wanna make sure that it's a safe environment, although our facilities takes care of that as well, if we wanna make sure that the teachers, you know, based on the characteristics of the students, if you put a certain number of students with certain disabilities, too many of them together, that also creates a safety problem. But then the other, then then the third thing we got in feedback was relative to, as schools, we use this model to figure out kind of budgets and stuff like that. So like, okay, how many kids, five by twenty four, that's how many classrooms I'm gonna need, right? I mean, so this is a definition that is trying to find a way to encapsulate both of those, so the local school board shall establish student educator ratios, which is what we had initially proposed, that promotes student learning for each learning opportunity and learning level based upon school safety policies, content, instructional method, and characteristics of learners. And then B, local school board shall adopt the model class sizes that shall be used solely for purposes of estimating school district budgets, so try and pull those two pieces of feedback apart. But again, I know that this has generated the most feedback and everybody is, you know, like very concerned about this. But I I do wanna point out that the goal here is to try and focus on effectiveness in the instructional environment and just because you can put, just cause we say twenty four or twenty five or thirty, doesn't mean that that's right.
Uh so we put this out there for discussion in the interest groups months ago, and we really haven't gotten the kind of constructive feedback we're hoping for in terms of thinking, how do you uh how do you tie? Or how do you create a ratio of student to teachers that makes sense, that is uniform or or within uh proper educational parameters, uh that doesn't use a hard number? And that's what we were trying to do, is just to facilitate that discussion of let's require a student-teacher ratio, um so it's not a free-for-all. But is there a way to require a student-teacher ratio that doesn't have us mandating a number? I I'm just leading, you bring me towards the opinion that that concept is just.
Too advanced.
Seriously, it's too advanced, like they, nobody gets it. The feedback we got is, you people are trying to support public schools, but you know, having class sizes, we've said repeatedly, you're trying to create flexibility for districts. You come back to us with a ratio that makes sense and nobody did, they don't, the concept is is not landing. And so I'm of the opinion that we probably are gonna have to go back to, okay, let's set some maximum class sizes and everything's gonna be classroom, and everything's gonna be a box, and everything's gonna be the same way it's always been. And um Val, did you have a?
Well, I mean, this this came up a lot in our public comments, and um I mean, it's it's in statute to some extent, if you go back to the, you know, the adequacy formula, they use the twenty five to one, thirty to one numbers, so I'm not sure we can change that. You know, from my time on the school funding commission, when we looked at this as well, um it seemed like the average student-to-teacher ratio throughout the state was about fifteen to one, not thirty to one. So the thirty to one was sort of like a um a maximum of safe limit.
Yes.
But that really, most schools were doing exactly what you were saying, they were adjusting based on their needs and their budgets and everything else, and adjusting in between, with that being, you can't go above this level. But I think educationally, no one was at that level, they were all trying to be something less than that.
Yeah, I think there are some, I mean, you're you're exactly right, and I, we've gotten, I think, in some conversations I had with the administration, I mean, they, you do run up against situations where you do have a a popular class. And they're gonna go by these rigid rules, and they're gonna say, oh, it says twenty five, so we can't put twenty six, even if they're all against kids, like even if we have a couple. And we were trying to say, how can we help you create something that works and that's maybe a little flexible? But I just think conceptually, nobody seems to be there.
Can I just throw in one other aspect to this too, is I mean, again, we're trying to have kind of an intelligent conversation, I mean, are we, and this, and I hope that this is not, you know, misunderstood, but are, we're supposed to be preparing our kids for college and career. Oftentimes, when these kids get to college, they're gonna have a seminar class with three of their kids. And so how have we prepared them, there are certain content areas where that may be the appropriate way to do it, and I don't wanna limit my schools in terms of saying like, no, you have to do these things too, so. So are we, you know, by by, so if I said thirty, like maybe that's not the right number, maybe sometimes there is something that's different out there, so. But I, to your point, I don't know if we can get there because everybody's so noisy at this point.
Right, and that and that goes to the flexibility of saying, look, you know, uh if you wanna design um a certain style of approach to education, where you say, you know what, we're gonna take certain kids that we know, as soon as we think they can handle it, we're gonna put them in a lecture hall. Before we do that, I don't particularly like that approach, that would be my preference, but you can see how maybe that works, but I think just, I just. People want a hard number, because what the reinsurance that the state is saying to the districts, uh you may not pass that line.
Yeah, that that number's been there for a long time, and I think people have worked around it. I I I'd hate to see that particular discussion take away from our goal of setting up three oh sixes that support a competency-based education system.
Right.
And.
No, I I hear you.
We're a hundred percent there, yes, a hundred percent, but we also wanna have that conversation.
Yeah, and that was, and that was, to your point, to the competency base, that was kind of our thinking behind this was, look, um as I put it before, you know, we've had competency bases two thousand and five. The rules are the Prius, they're the hybrid between the old way and the new way, we're trying to create the Tesla, which is all competency-based rules. And this was one of those thinking points where, okay, if we're really focused on competency base, shouldn't we've been talking about, you know, a little bit less about, um we've always had the classroom box with the seats and the teacher in the front, and it's a certain size, and all these rigid rules around it. Shouldn't we give the district some ways to say, hey, let's rethink how we do this, um just apparently they're not there, so.
Phil has a.
Yeah, Phil has a comment.
Yeah, I think kind of.
And then Mark has something to add, too.
And Phil has a.
Let's see Phil.
Okay, Phil, go ahead.
Raj, is that.
Okay, so you know, one thing, it depends on the number of, well, it depends on the subject of it. And as you said, you know, you go to college and you have three hundred kids sitting in the class, uh but in uh having too many kids in your class is actually too much of a stress on the teacher, because grading is, you know, good again, you know, due to shit. But in most, uh in the universities, they deal with TAs to cover, so the total number of teachers include teacher plus TAs.
In the ratio.
The ratio.
That's what we're after.
Yeah, and and that's kinda what we're doing, is is trying to say, think about it in terms of ratios, not in terms of a a box room, you know, and so anyway, go ahead.
So so that way, the the uh there is at least, you know, if if you're, and and today, as you said, you're moving towards Tesla, now you have a flipped classroom where kids are coming to class but already have figured out what is to be taught and what is to be learned, and they're only asking final questions. So your engagement is different from your opening of the subject fresh to in class, so you the I still don't have an answer for it, but.
No, but see Raj, you're exactly right, so that's exactly it, so let's say you had a class which is designed by instructors, right? Designed to be specifically for kids who already have an advanced level of knowledge of the subject, right? Uh so you're not, I mean, there are ways you can imagine school being a little different, being more creative, and not fitting in the box, right? This is literally a box that they're telling them, you have to have these boundaries, and you have to have so many people in this box, and we're trying to give a, find a way to engage students, right? And find the proper ratio of instructors to students, um and what we're being told is, we don't wanna think that way, we don't want that, just give us the box. But I think that's where we are, Phil.
So, I think I'm totally there with you, I totally, like, this is a great area of flexibility and like, could potentially distract from the competency base. I wonder if there's like a, and like honestly, when I look at like the comments, like, there's some super pragmatic, right, it would be super hard to budget, right? It would be really hard to budget if I'm not given these numbers, but.
No, I mean, would it have?
But I, I think put some in there for that, right, you know.
So, right, like the B, right, the like local, like I wonder if we, there's a middle ground, right, we move like closer to Tesla, for the, where you do require, we do require a local school board to adopt model class sizes, and then play some sort of cap, right? Like that will not exceed.
Well, I mean, I think that's what, that's what it is. I think instead of model, it needs to be maximum, right, I mean, that's kinda what we're hearing, is we want the maximum, we want the cap, we don't want the district.
Maybe articulate it as one to thirty, or one to twenty five, as a ratio rather than as a cap, class size.
Well.
I, yeah, I just think that from a local board level, like, like what I've, what I would see there sitting on a local board is like, I'm now given like task of like, I'm gonna be gonna sit down with administration and figure out what the right ratio is for our district.
Right.
But I think that's a valuable conversation.
Exactly, we really have.
So how do we like write this in a way that mitigates the concerns that we're gonna have one to fifty, or fifty to one, while still having a requirement that the local boards adopt the ratio that's right for them?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I I don't know, we'll get there, Mark, did you wanna throw something?
Yeah, I was just gonna add that I think the intent is is great and viable, and I think people are there, I think that you're kind of painting a little bit of a picture that people really want the box, they don't want the box.
That's a hundred percent of the feedback we're getting is, we want the box, give us the box.
Yeah, I think that perhaps, you know, that's maybe the way it's it's being expressed after a really long uh feedback period.
Yeah.
And people are probably feeling a little bit bedraggled and um perhaps not heard, I'm not sure, but I can tell you that in thirty years of working in public education, twenty nine, I won't exaggerate. That class size was never a limiting number when it came to innovation and thinking up, with nev- I've never ever heard anyone say, we can't do this because of class size.
I have heard that, and I'm just saying, like, in in my experience, I've heard that from administrators, that uh and because of budgeting, right? Um and and so I think it does limit at some times, um I I appreciate what you're saying, and I I I wish that we could find something that would actually tie it to a ratio that made sense, instead of just being like, okay, it's gotta be a classroom, and it's gotta be this, and like. But I think if we do it in some way that basically encourage them to think ratios, but still has caps.
Well, can we be pretty sure with cap, essentially, it's caps, instead of calling it a maximum class size of thirty or twenty five or whatever that number is, right, you could just say, look, one to thirty is your ratio, and then if they have a, they have a. Lecture hall, then you gotta have TA in there, so.
Well, you know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think if you look at like humanities classes that exist throughout the state, where they're teaching US history and English eleven together.
Yeah.
Those class sizes are often larger than the cap, but you have two teachers in there, you have a pair of professionals in there as well.
Yeah.
So the ratio is going to exist based on student need.
Right.
And what's happening, so I I would say that if you run into conversations around the state where someone is saying, we can't, we we have um AP European history that we can't offer to this one student because of a maximum class size. Call us, we'll work with you, we'll work them to think outside the box, to think creatively, we'll just gather some resources to make sure that is not a limiting mindset. Cause I can tell you, that's not pervasive, and that's not what people are thinking or want to think. That could, you know, be an isolated reaction to a bunch of external factors, where someone just needs someone to help them think differently. So I I would say that um the number, although I one hundred percent agree that it feels draconian in CBE model, that's not what it's being used for, it's it's really just, I I think you captured it really well. It's a protection, it's so that resources can be initially allocated in a framework approach, and then what you do within that framework approach is where all of the innovation and really cool things can happen. And if you don't have the specter of, you know, a group controlling some sort of meeting saying, there's no regulation here, so we would like to take advantage of the fact that there's no regulation here. So I I do think it's really unfortunately one of those things where you're putting a protection in place and hope that that protection will will never be tested.
Right.
Um and that's some of the reaction that you're getting from the field, but if if anybody sees it being used as a limiting factor, then reach out, we're ready to partner and make sure it's natural.
All right. When it's something. I I.
Yeah, go ahead.
I might have a door to the box.
You just keep going, so.
Yeah, okay, keep, go ahead.
So I think it might be like a three-pronged approach, so basically, one is an idea that he asks the school, each of the local school boards to um basically adopt their own model with a cap, but the door, so how about a waiver? So the state, because we have other places in the in the law where they can have the state board and ask for a waiver, and they may be in a situation where they can say, we have a really innovative idea, we would like to run a class with fifty students, it's a math class or a physics class, but we have fifty very interested students. And you basically, they see the waiver, which basically at least starts that conversation, that there are some classes that can be co-ordered larger than the ratios that are provided for in the law. And and we have other places in this, in your, in the rules where we allow um school districts to come seek a waiver from the state board, and they can basically bring their innovative plan, um at least that's a kind of an idea to sort of like.
I mean, I I think if we go back to, I I think part of uh where this came from is that uh the rule calls it class size. And I think that's part of a conceptual problem, right? But then it actually spells it out as a ratio, right? So I think keeping it ratio and getting rid of the term class size, like it's kind of that upper management where we're saying, look, I'm gonna encourage you, hey, look, you may just prefer classroom, but all that kind of stuff, but as long as it's really just tied to the ratio. Cause the phrase it says, you know, thirty students per fewer per educator, and it doesn't say in a room, right? So it's still, it's in there as a ratio, which is what we were trying to stick to. I'm fine going back to the caps if we need to go back to the cap, to reassure everybody that we're not trying to get districts carte blanche to, right, you know, million elderly kids in a class, that's not what we're trying to do, we're trying to make an appropriate ratio here. And we were doing this through the humility of saying, how do we know that thirty is the proper ratio? Wouldn't the school district, you know, professionals know better what the proper ratio is, and what we're being told is, no, they don't, we want you to mandate that, and so um.
I I think there's a there's a point here that's being missed, and it's that a classroom is not thirty identical people with identical needs.
Right.
And if you have a classroom that's got twenty five ESL students in it and five regular students in it, what does that really look like? Or you have a classroom that has five students that all have a a pair of professional at their side, are they on, what does that look like? So I think that your goal to leave it to the local district to define makes the most sense, because they know who their students are, and if if we cap, if we put a cap of twenty five students in an elementary school. And it's a it's a community um that has less resources, but they have all the ESL students, uh it's a bigger, it's a bigger.
Okay, I guess I'm at the point where, I mean, I like the way that this encourages student educator ratios as opposed to learning for each learning opportunity level, et cetera. I'm okay with putting a ratio cap.
We'll get a cap.
And and says, okay, let's keep these caps, if I'm doing that, if people are terrified, they don't trust the local districts enough to establish the boundaries, and well, or does the local districts do do cap, right? But while encouraging them to be creative.
So we'll come up with some language for that, but I just, I'm gonna point out too, like going back to the beginning, school districts have the responsibility and flexibility, right? So they're supposed to be behave, like we're, wanna be sure, we're acknowledging that our local school boards are supposed to be acting responsibly, and we have to assume that that's the role that they take step toward it, but we can, we can get some ratio caps in there too.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is where we're gonna have to be for now.
Yeah.
And maybe conceptually going forward, move beyond that.
I think what I would answer, you're just gonna be wrong.
Except except the one that's there now, which is thirty one.
Yeah, one of them that was more wrong.
I think that one would be less wrong. Here, Julie. Next.
Um I did just, well, I did have a question, I think I had a, I have a point of education, is this school-wide ratios or classroom ratios, are we looking at specific?
It's per educator, right, so that's how the way, so it's classroom ratio, right, so it's thirty kids per educator in in the classroom.
In the classroom.
In the classroom, whatever a classroom is, right?
Except when it is, say, a lab or a workshop, then the number of.
Instruction settings.
Number of stations would be different, but if it is a classroom, then I think that's a different story.
I mean, that's.
It's not building wise.
It's not built, yeah, incorrect, no, it's one.
Thank you. Sorry, the lawyer was lawyering, I'm trying to make sure I understood what was intended, sorry.
No, no, not. It is. Correct, it is, it is intended to maintain this classroom ratio that's in the third rule.
And stay below the fire marshals limit.
That also is in there already, yes.
Julie.
Um, did you want, I just wanted to go backwards quickly, just to point out, um, a little bit above on page.
Um, did you want, I just wanted to go backwards quickly just to point out, um, a little bit above on page thirty five. Um, we added back in some language that had been removed regarding um first professional development, um, cause it points to E five thirteen. But some of that wasn't in E five thirteen, so we just added it back in.
That was came out of that working session. I just wanna point you out to the board that it was a part of that session.
This is um at the top of thirty five.
Exactly.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so actually the 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 first part of that actually starts in the middle of page thirty four.
Yeah.
We added back in some language for A.
The school board shall read it.
It is. That was all that was there and I and I re-added it, yeah.
Okay.
We fixed it.
Okay.
Just just a moment, just a little. Um, but now to move forward, um, we've got again some edits, um, some competency, um, definition comments. And we're gonna land on page forty, um, about halfway down. And this was another big one that we got lots of public comment on. And again, there was um an OLS comment as well. This is on page forty. We're talking about the alternative programs.
That's right, we're we're doing on page forty. Okay.
And um we, after going through, um, you know, we had changed it to course of study, but after reading it and looking at it, um, again, it really does make more sense for it to be program. Um, and we talked about again a definition for program, which comes later on in the um in the thing, this is my brain started not working, um, the side by side.
I'll ju- I'll jump in. So we had a change, like we use course of study throughout this document, but we also used it in alternative program.
Yeah.
But the alternative programs actually are like separate educational programs and course of study was inappropriate there. So we, that was just uh
Right.
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 It was incorrect.
And there's a lot of comments on there and it really does, again, it it is a program and um.
Yeah, sounds very perfect.
So.
Yeah. And then the other thing is like, so OLS had pointed out that we had defined learning opportunities, personalization and differentiation, but we've got specific definitions for each one of those that are very precise and worked through.
Um, so in that same section, um this was again something that got pointed out a lot in public comments, um, that we removed some language with district and graduation requirements. Again, we didn't remove them because of the the requirements not being at the district level or graduation level. Um and so, you know, this may be a place where we want to add back in, um, you know, the same competencies and graduation requirements that are required within an alternative program. Um, but it is approved by a local school board, so it is, you know, that local decision. Um and then the next one, uh, oh no, there's a a citation, um, that they had a question on and it and it points to.
Can we finish the first one?
Yeah, let's stay on this one right here.
Can I, yeah, don't jerk ahead there. So we're on page forty one, the first green box.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So so what does the issue, I I don't understand.
So a course of study as defined is a.
A little graduation, like, is it?
Yeah, we're on page um.
Yeah.
Forty, forty one.
Page forty one.
Forty one, yeah.
Yeah.
So so nobody, so B is not in question. Uh, it it's often there, there's apparent differences up. Program and their requests. So we're changing B to program. Courses, that's it. Really, the biggest thing here is B and E, right? To district and graduation competence.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if you look at the original language, um, D, which is now E in the new one.
So we're going back to alternative program though there, right?
Uh, yeah, it's about the whole thing.
Since course of studies, we're going back to program. So wouldn't C in that second column, courses study, you program, we're changing that back.
Mm-hmm.
Um program would be offered between the columns of A. So E, E is now basically E illustrates our program. So it's to the same house as how many schools do this. So they want us, a lot of the feedback was put back in district. Right direction.
So where would you put that back in Julie?
Wouldn't say tellers, we're able to achieve the same competencies, so uh district graduation requirements.
Well, and this, this is, um, I don't think I updated this after we had talked about the competency definition because the definition of competency now includes district competencies and graduation competencies. So if we're using that statutory definition, it talks about this includes district competencies and graduation competencies. Um, so you know, do we need, dis- I mean, if we want to differentiate between a state competency versus a district competency, yes.
No, we're not doing that. That's not what, that's nothing. So it's unclear, Julie. Why don't you just explain? I'm I'm even lost now.
Um, in a lot of.
Right, so I mean, I think what they're saying is.
Right, I think two E is better.
So why not up have, um, they're they're concerned that that they want district graduation requirements back as well, right?
That, yeah, that the that these programs are going to be have the same requirements as their local.
Graduation.
Yeah.
But they already, like, in other words, like, it's the local program, like, so we do have districts that have two types of diplomas sometimes, right?
Mm-hmm.
And alternative diplomas. And so we just wanna be careful that we don't limit these school districts' ability to do that.
Right.
Sometimes that's appropriate for them to do it.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know if that was just maybe not clear to OLS, um. Can I tell you, Mark, we're just, let's just, let's pull time.
Yeah, I was gonna, maybe one point of clarification might help a little bit.
Yeah.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I want Julie to to.
Uh, I just wanna, that might help us, thank you.
I think alternative programs are different than what you just referred to, Frank, in regard to special education.
No, no, this is not special education. This is alternative.
Right, so I, but I, but I think that you might have inadvertently conflated those two with that last statement.
Not not intentionally, those, I'm.
Yeah, I said.
Different, they're not special education, right? These are alternative, like, there's alternative diplomas and some districts have have nothing to do with special education.
Yeah. There are diploma pathways, but they're not necessarily called alternative diplomas. I think alternative learning, well, alternative programs have been, um, you you'll see they're referenced, that they, because they can be warehoused differently. Sometimes they have the same graduation requirements or.
So, so some don't, that's my point. So like I have some that have like a SAU diploma and they have a district diploma and I don't wanna mess that up for the districts that do have separate diplomas.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, um, like, I'm open to alleviating people's concerns there, uh, if there's a way to do it.
Julie's, yeah, I'm not sure, like, can you just explain this to us again? Just just start from the beginning. I can tell you're stuck too and.
Yeah, so I mean, in terms of their, um, the definition of that that is here, um they said, what does personalization differentiated methods mean in practice? Well, we've defined both of those those words. Um, and the they've, um, implies that all learning opportunities may now be an alternative course of study. Um, but if if we are not use, if it's not a course of study, I think that.
It takes care, right? I I think that when we changed this back to program, that there was no more conflation of those two concepts.
Right, through. Right, exactly. Um, and then.
I don't understand this, the top, the green comment on the top of page forty one.
I'm, I s- I think, I think I didn't remove that before, um, after we had already talked about changing the definition of com- yeah, in comments, yeah.
The OLS comments. I believe that's the case, cause it doesn't make sense, cause it's not even two E anymore.
Right.
So we can ignore that.
See, this, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to feel, but I am not the only one who thinks.
Yeah, no, that, yeah. So I I think what I hear is there's concern that this language in E ties it to state competencies and pulls these requirements for the alternative program only from the district graduation.
That's what I.
That's how I think I hear.
That's what I thi- that's what I think was being said in public comment. This is public comment piece.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. So is there a way, is there a way to?
There are no state competencies.
Yeah, and so this could be a misunderstanding from the members of public comment.
There's cool, yeah. There's a lot of places, again, where it, you know, the lo- local control came up a lot in the public comment and I don't know if it was a misunderstanding where words were taken out. We were trying to make it more streamlined and clear.
Yeah, but would would it be, like, I'm just throwing it out there for conversation's sake, um, would it be, uh alleviate the concerns without disrupting anything to say, uh, something to the effect of, um consistent with R S A one eight three C three and consistent with district graduation requirements, right? Something like that. So we're just making clear, hey, you know, we're not trying to take away any local authority here. You guys set your graduation requirements. They're gonna have their requirements for their alternative program and their requirements for their regular diploma and we're just saying, look, it's it's within your graduation requirements. That's not trying to take that away. Maybe that's not the right way to word it, but. True, I think, you know, it's like we're. I'm on with that too. Like, is there a way just to like? Just to, just to, just to make clear, like, we're not taking it away. It's still gotta be consistent with your district graduation requirements. Correct that, but. Yeah.
Well, and the and the other issue here is is they, uh, OLS was questioning the citation, which was there, right? We didn't change it.
Yeah.
Um, and the citation is to statewide education improvement and assessment to the program established. And so their question is wha- what does the citation have to do with this? And I and I think it has to do with assessment and competencies, um. But I I don't know, cause it's been there for.
Like, why they cited that in the past, I don't know.
Right, exactly.
But that's what they cited and it got away with it last time, but now they're asking us.
Mm-hmm.
Can we just get the citation?
Yeah. But that also, but it's the statewide education improvement and assessment program. So maybe that's where that comes from, is that it needs to align with the state assessment, is what it's saying maybe?
I mean, cause it talks about define what a student should know and be able to do, develop and implement methods of assessment and learning applications, give report assessment results, help provide accountability at all grade levels. Use the results at both the state and local levels. And then I don't think, I mean, is the assertion that it's an incorrect citation by OLS now, even though before it was okay?
Yeah, I so, um, yeah, they're saying whether this is the correct citation is there doesn't appear to be competencies outlined in the cited statute.
Cause there's not a state, no?
And and I think maybe when this was cited, I think maybe the goal was to say that the competencies were being assessed based on this. I don't know that that's clear in the way that it's written.
Right. Is this one of those pin and and come back to it?
Yeah, why don't we pin, we'll put a pin in this.
I mean, I'm happy to work on it if we wanna just keep working on it.
No, let's come back, let's come back to this.
There's been a couple of amendments to C three six.
And uh, there have been over the years.
And and I'm just looking at one of them. So let me study this one other way.
Okay, yeah, cause, yeah, I I don't think we would try.
It was getting, it was a rabbit hole there.
Right, okay. Um, alright, do we need a, oh, it's new and I think that's a good time to take a break. I think two minutes. I see a box that might be mentioned.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So, uh, why don't we just take a, take a break?
Ten minute break.
Yeah, ten, ten minutes, so.
Okay.
Come back. Um, which is pretty good progress.
We're getting there, yeah.
We'll all get asked up here.
Keep that here.
Sorry, is that okay?
No, I love it. I need to do that. I think we're flagging the appropriate case to work on here.
Okay.
Cause it doesn't really say anything else about confidentiality, but if that's what it's citing, I'm assuming it's just saying it needs to meet the requirements in E, let's continue.
I mean, that's all, it's it's an alternative program that has special education students in it, it needs to comply with the special education requirement. Needs to be a suitable setting and a placement for that student.
Right. Right.
So I just think that they didn't understand.
Right, exactly. So I think we can explain that pretty easily or we can just more, add more clarity to why it's being cited.
Does that make sense for you? In other words, like, you can't just, a student with a IEP placement for that student is a very specific thing, like, you can't just get them placed anywhere. They have to be placed in a group setting and
Yeah.
if this alternative program is marked on the school, it would likely be a group setting, but that's all that, we're not, so so that you can't send these kids someplace else.
Okay, sure. Or do you?
Uh, there's one more comment here.
Okay.
Um, and so this was again looking at what was removed here. Um, and and we had talked about this a little bit. I don't know if you remember this or not, but um, so it's saying, you know, what has to be submitted now, just that the program exists. And I think that is what it says, that, um, they shall report the program to the department. Um, because the program is is approved by the local school board, says that in the rules. But then it also says that they need to send the local school, like, all of the stuff that the local school board already approved. And so that was taken out and we're just saying they have to report that that the program is there. Um, and so they were questioning if that was the intent or not. And I think we decided that was the intent.
I thought that was the intent, just to say, look, you have to tell us that this thing exists. So if you can clarify that, right, and just say.
Yeah. Right. Well, I I don't think it's unclear. I think they were just looking at what was removed.
You kind of misinterpreted that, yeah.
Are you sure you don't?
And we evaluate this.
Well, I mean, should should we say, let's see, uh, that implements an a- a- alternative program there, and that'll say alternative program should work. The creation of the program, the implementation of the program to the department. Maybe they could be a little bit clearer, right?
Yeah, is it when it starts? Is it an, cause it, uh?
Okay.
Uh, implementation, um.
It's not saying annually.
Yeah, so annually they're gonna report, was if they have an alternative program at this point.
The reporting.
Annually should report the existence of the program.
The notion you're, just I'm saying like.
I I mean.
Yeah.
It it, I can see why somebody would read that and go, report what about the program?
Sure.
Uh, maybe, I mean, it seems to be a.
For the presence of the program.
Something like that.
Okay, we can do so.
We're not blocking the language. Annually the
we can put a presence.
School districts should report the the alternatives program.
Right, that's fine, right?
Okay.
Or, okay, we'll, yeah, we'll see that.
No, we'll we'll play with the language there.
Thanks, yeah.
Um, alright, so forty two is, um, no, just an editorial. Um, so now look at, um, down to the bottom of page forty four. And this is a legislative intent, um, notice, again, talking about, um, you know, we've removed these goals initially because most of it is in statute. Um, however, um, after going back through, um we took out, because a lot of it was mixed between local requirements and state requirements. And the rules that are going to be set up later are for the state assessment. But in the minimum standards, there should probably still be some.
Did you indicate your page? I got people.
Yeah, forty four, the bottom of forty four, but it it goes into forty five and forty six.
Okay.
They just weren't caught up.
Yeah, sorry.
So, yeah, so this was the assessment. So the rule originally included both local assessment stuff as well as state assessment requirements. We were gonna create, and Nate is working out pretty, creating a whole state assessment rule. And so we pulled all of it out, but then we said, well, it probably makes sense to have the local assessment back in here. So we're pushing the local assessment stuff back into this rule.
And there were, there was.
And then state assessment part will be in a separate rule, not the local assessment.
And there was one requirement in the rule that was not in statute in the accountability section. And so A and B of the green language, those are from statistical reports and accountability. And then the rest is, um, assessment. Um, and so we're proposing putting that language back in instead of repealing those two. That was another thing that there was a lot of, um, public comment on as well. Um, and then, you know, with the OLS comments, um putting back in the pieces that, um, need to be in there for the local, the local requirements for what's required at the local level for a assessment.
But Julie, it's pretty much the same as what we get pulled out.
Yes, yes, um, I didn't, I didn't recreate the meal here, I just, I, um, worked with Nate to pull out the language that was in there about local and took out the state stuff.
Page fifty two.
So this was a question on what are state academic standards?
We're on page fifty two.
Page fifty two.
So when we refer to our state academic standard, we're referring to our state
State academic standards, yeah.
Standards, and from one eighty six A, which talks about academic, you know, the state board of education shall adopt rules pursuant to five forty one A relative to academic standards for all grades and public schools.
And the statute says, establish academic standards, so it's, so there's two different concepts there in that statute. One is the state board is supposed to adopt, um, rules and establish academic standards, which you've had um by your course of doing, and 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 judicial blocks is a legal term, that basically means it's how you've always done it, the state board has approved those, um, academic standards. My suggestion, um, was to basically in the future is to basically add a rule that basically sets forth what your standard operating procedures are with respect to how you've adopted those academic standards in the past, um, to basically describe what you do. Um, and so we can bring that up at a future date, but that would be sort of how I would think that we might manage this, that sort of clarifies and keeps with the statute of how those standards are supposed to be established by the state board and what you should be considering when you're establishing those academic standards.
But principally, this board has been following the same practice that's been going on for decades in the state.
No, and just to basically memorialize that in the document, that can be, um
Is isn't this the state standard? Are we recursively referencing it?
No.
No.
So the
Go ahead, yeah, yeah.
So the, these are the minimum standards for local school approval, which has to be adopted as concerned to five seventy one A, which should be administered in a whole process. The, um, state academic standards, um, are a set of standards that actually live in a completely outside document. And those don't have to go through the rules process under five forty one A, they just simply need to be established by the board. In the past, the state board has brought those in front of the state board, they've evaluated the contents of those academic standards, and they approve those by a majority vote of the state board, just as you would approve any other resolution. But they are a completely separate set of documents, um, and they have been approved by the state board on their own schedule, not necessarily every ten years, which is
So so to distinguish between these two, so essentially, this is how, these are the minimum standards for how you basically run a school, and then like for example, we have the common for math standards, the common for ELA standard then, just as science standards.
Okay.
So those are the academic standards that are being referenced here, so this is different than that.
Okay, okay.
And the most recent standards that were updated that you might have heard of is the science standards, which were updated just a hand and four years ago.
Um, the next comment is, um talking about defining personalization, individualization, and differentiation, which they are defined, um, and so that comment is not necessarily relevant since it was already in the proposal. Um, the next comment is, um they're questioning the use of where applicable, if it, if what is meant is if there's a kindergarten program, then the insertion is not needed. Um, I mean, so we can just take that out, it, not every school has kindergarten, so that's where that comes from, but
I'm sorry, if applicable.
Right. Um, alright, the next
Uh, I think that part of it is, um, they don't like the word where as opposed to
Correct, so we can just take that, if applicable.
Yeah.
As opposed to where, can we have that?
Um, alright, so the next one is, um, governing competency, which we've discussed, so we go to page fifty four. So there's a lot of of commentary here, um.
Well, if you're not, let me try and tee it up for you, okay, so these rules are limited in RSA one ninety three E two A, paragraph four says minimum standard for local school approval for the areas identified in paragraph one shall constitute an opportunity for an education, general course shall periodically but not less than ten years. Update these, um changes made by the, okay, real, uh, yeah, okay, the general course shall periodically but not less frequently than every ten years, review, revise, update as necessary, the minimum standards identified in paragraph one, paragraph one is where it identifies English, math, science, social studies, arts, world language, health, physical education, engineering, personal financial literacy, computer science. We're in paragraph one. Um, and shall ensure that a high quality minimum standard for political approval in each area of education defined in paragraph one is maintained. Changes made by the board of education to the school approval standards through rulemaking after the effective date shall not be included within these standards that constitute an opportunity for an adequate education uh without prior adoption by the court. So essentially, this body of doc, this document that we're working on is limited to the content areas that are enumerated in one ninety three E two A one, which is, you know, paragraph one, and so we have two areas in here. Um, and and Jelcar pointed out some, but not all of those areas, right? So for example, if you look at on the pa- top of page fifty four, um, you have something called digital literacy, digital literacy is not enumerated, um, in that list on paragraph one. If I go down to middle school, family and consumer science and digital literacy are not included on that list of things, so I'm not it's unclear to me that we have rulemaking statutory authority.
It says computer use and digital literacy in the statute, that's number computer science is eleven, then the teacher shall use academic the following skills shall be integrated in learning areas.
Those are integrated.
Computer learning using digital literacy.
And we're calling out, so they are integrated, you could argue for digital literacy under that basis maybe, um, you know, as opposed to be in a separate course of study, you know, which is
Yeah.
how it's kind of used in this list.
Okay.
And then the other one that we run into difficulty with is the family and consumer science. And it was interesting because, um uh you know, like, cause we've also added personal financial literacy, and, um, that's not on this list, um you know, so this, so these lists are not synchronized, um.
I think there there's the lists are different between elementary, middle, and high school, and in statute, it's just one list.
We have one list.
And I believe in the statute, it says that we the state board can differentiate how those are taught at different levels, um
So it's the second part of this argument.
Which comes in with the with the different lists.
Yeah, so we've got a list that we did for elementary, we did have a list that we've done for middle school, and we have a list that we did for high school. Um, and so we're suggesting that because the board has the ability to decide where these are gonna be instructed, that we're allowed to have different lists for different levels in statute, that would be our statutory authority, but we still have a, um, so for example, if in uh, you know, on page fifty four, we have an optional world language if offered, right, so that would be, they're saying, but world language is enumerated in this list, how can you not require it at the world language? And we're saying, well, we do, but not at that level. And we have that flexibility, so.
Or they point out, you know, we wrote Holocaust and genocide education as applicable, well, we have a rule that specifies where that starts, which is it no later than eighth grade. Um, and so again, if we wanna be explicit there, because, you know, if you have a K through eight school, or if you have a sixth through eight, you know, um where it's applicable, um, but but that's why it says that is, it's, that's not in statute, that's in rule. Those determinations, because you can make those determinations in rule.
So the three things that you have to decide relative to this, the super female staff, right, I don't know. Okay, number one, um, do we believe, I'm on the wrong page here. Uh, do we believe that I'll take the first one, do we believe that we have statutory authority relative to digital literacy to include it on this list? Um, to your point, Drew, it is in B, it says teacher shall use academic and applied instruction to teach learning areas under subparagraph A, the following skills shall be integrated into the learning areas, including computer use and digital literacy and logic and rhetoric, okay? Is that sufficient statutory nexus for us to say, it's not in the initial list, but it is kind of in the subcategory of integrated list? Can we include digital literacy? We probably could, but we just wanna flag that for you.
And Yeah, and they're saying, is it the same as computer science? Well, no, it's it's not, but computer science is not listed here, right? So I think they're trying to understand, again, we don't have engineering technologies listed at the elementary level, even though it's listed in in the statute. Because at some point, it was decided that that then needs to be taught at that level.
That believes in the second issue, which is whether
Well, let's just, let's resolve one at a time, let's say, I don't want, cause I I think we already got everybody completely confused, like, I'm trying to like, um is, so digital literacy, do we have statutory authority to be able to include this on our list? Would be the first question.
Till she
At any grade.
At any, at any grade, right, we'll talk about where we wanna include it, but and I think you do, but that would be the first question.
So look, the statute says, following skills shall be integrated into the learning areas plural. Computer use and digital literacy.
Okay.
So, uh it's a statutory requirement to include those in the learning areas, which would seem to be the all learning areas, I don't say some.
Okay.
So so I think clearly have the alrighty.
Okay, that's
To include that in some capacity, it's just, is it the right way to do it at this point?
Okay, so we're gonna come to the right way in a second, so let me just answer, that's the first question, so second question will be on, begin on fifty four, family and consumer science. Is included in this rule, what's that?
I said it's been there for, I went back and looked, and it's been there for
It's been there a long time.
Yes, it has, yes.
Okay, so do we have statutory authority to include family and consumer science?
So social studies, including civics, government, have a share, I'm social studies is kind of where family and consumer science has been categorized in general, right?
Yeah, that's my face.
So we could, we could say, social studies, do we include family and consumer science? I don't know, we could try and Jelcar will let us do that, right? Okay, Marky, you want to?
Um, but but so so personal financial literacy is ten.
Right.
So
We don't have that.
I mean
Not at the elementary, but do we wanna go there?
Well, let's talk about like the categories first, like let's settle the family and consumer science.
Maybe we can, well, maybe we just change that to personal financial literacy, cause that aligns with the statute.
We can add a personal financial literacy.
Just, so if we change eat, family, consumer science to personal financial literacy to align the terminology with the statute.
Family, I think family and consumer science is a very difficult topic for personal and financial literacy, and I was going to, the question I was going to ask was, if you were going to try to, um, bootstrap uh, I I just don't think I implied my answer to that, um, the, uh, family and consumer science into social studies, would our social studies, um, academic standards align with that?
Uh, unlikely.
Unlikely was my thought.
But that's a separate question, okay?
That Not same thing.
I'm trying to resolve as many issues as we can, yeah.
I just feel like they're different content areas.
Okay.
Uh, family and consumer science I think pretty clearly falls under economics, I mean, that's, that's what it is.
And economics is certain
That's, it's a subset of economics, I mean, I don't think there's anybody who maybe would dispute that unless you would have called it a subset of sociology to
Still just like
it's economics. So we're just calling it con- consumer science, right, I mean, that's, it's all economic stuff, unless you get in, so the families stuff can overlap into you know, fact class, which is sewing, and like that kind of stuff, right, so that's a, it's a, it's a hybrid bit of a class there, um.
And then, so so we've, you've resolved a couple of things, so first in terms of digital literacy, we're, okay, we got it.
I think so.
Family and consumer science is gonna become a component of social studies, and we can call it out as such, I don't think there's a problem with that.
I I think so, right, and then that's where it falls.
Is economics and social studies? It is.
Yep, yeah. And then we will add personal financial literacy, but that's, again, but now you're into the third issue, which is like, cause we don't have a personal financial literacy requirement at the middle school level, it's really a high school requirement, which is later on in this document, that's for some further
We need to include it.
And maybe, yeah, I think it's a separate statute that says where, at what level it's taught versus one ninety three E two A.
Yeah, right, right.
We can take a look at that material lines.
So so I think we've answered all my questions, like, that's what, I mean, I think that we have a digital literacy, we're gonna argue with Jelcar that we think it's a statutory allowable. Uh, family and consumer science, we're gonna argue is, uh, part of social studies in terms of the economics. And then the third is the flexibility for the state board to decide at what, which, which of these enumerated content areas in one ninety three E at which levels?
So this document, what, we we are revising this from what empirical thing?
Well, I mean, it goes back, some components back to the eighties, it just depends, like, cause it's hard to get a date because there's, there's certain pieces that was maybe updated recently, and I mean
This
Wow.
Yeah, so my, my question is, we, since since then, and up to today, we've added financial literacy, we've had computer science, we've added
Computer science, yeah.
I'm not sure
Probably engineering, is that what it is?
Probably another one, so is there someone have a crystal ball, there's something in the horizon you see coming that will be added to the public school education that
AI.
might fall into one of these categories, so if we leave it a little broader, then we don't have work to do later.
So we just leave social studies and we, the implication is that that family and consumer science is part of social studies rather than enumerated, is that what you're suggesting?
I'm I'm suggesting that it's, it's like now we have to have, you know, our currency now is not what we know it to be, and
We make it broad enough to capture it all. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there are things in the next twenty five years that are going to to float up and and become part of school curriculums and and are we limi- if we limit these too much, have have we made more work for ourselves later?
So I mean, I think, so for example, family and consumer science, it's the right to be that is a, really a subset of economics slash social studies. That previous boards, it's been there for a, for a very long time, but previous boards have, um found it necessary and advisable to s- to separate it out, to s- to make sure districts offer this subset of economics, right? So it's not, we also just wanted to say, you're, you maybe are offering macroeconomics, and that's not good enough, and make sure the kids have this basic family consumer concept of microeconomics. That's how I interpret that getting written in there, right, it's just we do this at other levels, you know, we do this in in other areas by spelling out very specifically, you have to offer these types of things in economics, but I I think more, the question is, does it belong, like, I mean, we
As a separate item.
We we clearly have the ability to require, make economics and social studies requirements, does it belong as a fallout here? As opposed to something in a separate section, that seems to me to be the question. Um
So the question is whether or not we can argue Jelcar could allow us to have that as a separate line.
Yeah. Um
Is is personal finance going on the, on this list?
Well, it would be at the high school at home. Not, this is middle school and elementary, there's
Yeah.
Will be coming up to the high school, obviously.
I mean, it's worth a conversation, which I'm trying to suppose.
I think that you've given us, I don't think we need any more input.
Let's remember.
Are you okay, Julie? I think we've resolved those categories.
I think I have what I need to have the conversation with the office.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Mark.
Yeah, can I just add for context, that there's a separate certification for family and consumer science, that's not the same as social studies?
Yes.
And in application, the family and consumer science group has never typically been under the umbrella of social studies, so that's not the way it's.
Yeah.
It's typically been in in a school setting, not to say that that there couldn't be change or appropriate change. Um child development, uh you know, sewing, cooking, all of those types of things have been part, uh you know, nutrition, health.
Exactly.
Sometimes in the wellness field as well, so it's been an amalgam of concepts, but there is a separate certification area, and I would say it's less social studies heavy than you probably think.
Exactly.
Right, and and I think it was more social studies heavy when I was coming up than than it is now, and I agree with you on that, and I see, you know, I've helped my kids with with their. With this class, and it's a lot, and it's helping wellness, and I think, I guess the broader point is, I think you would agree, but tell me you agree. The subjects that this incorporates in the kind of hybrid class are all authorizing this list, like some economics, there's some health and wellness, there's some, but it's. It's all sort of, so the board of education at some point in the past has decided to create this new hybrid category of a. Class that give kids practical daily life skills, pulling from these different subjects.
Yeah.
But it's not like we're inventing.
We're not coming up with new categories that are outside of the statute, you're arguing them, we're trying to make, right, you know.
Right, we're not saying it's efficient, right?
Right, 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 although that is that is a team sport now.
It is. It's great, but you know, in other words, I I think it's defensible to say we're pulling from these different categories, that's why it's a separate thing and it's a it's a new class.
So we can make that argument to Joe Card.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Oh, and that it's a separate licensure.
Separate license, right, and I think.
The separate licensure is not gonna help us so much, like, so we have to connect it to the list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the statute.
Got it, got it.
Right, but I think your point is is important to sort of show that it's a hybrid class, it's a hybrid concept, it came from the things we're authorized to do.
Okay.
And it's been there for ages, like, why didn't they bring this up before?
Well, that that happens a lot, right.
So where was high school?
I see a little bit of middle.
We're getting there.
It's coming up, it's coming up.
Uh so did they, they flagged Oklahoma word language, was there anything that was there?
This is the argument, do we have the ability to, does this board have the ability to designate where those subjects are gonna be placed?
They have forever, right, so, I mean, are, is Joe Card saying, if it's in this list, you have to require it in every grade?
We think that that's gonna be a pretty hard sell.
I think it's un- I think it's un- that's why I'd say it's unclear, and I think again, that would be a conversation with nuance that we would say, you know.
It's a joke.
This part of the statute says this, and this is why it's listed that way.
I mean, to be clear. I would love to, I think world language in elementary school is where it belongs, frankly, um I if they wanna, you know, say, yeah, gotta do that.
I love it too, yes.
By the time kids hit purity, the ability to learn that world language is very diminished, um which is something to think about paying more for.
It's page fifty five.
Um page fifty five is edits and talks about competencies that we've already addressed, so you can go to page fifty seven. This is where high school comes in. So this is another place where we had removed district and graduation competencies, um and and so, you know, if we wanna add back in district competencies there. We could, but again, competencies includes districts, so.
Yeah, the definition of competencies is district competencies, like, there's there's no other competencies that we see on the, like, you guys, yeah.
Right. Um and again, they're asking about the academic standards and state model competencies, we did. Uh note that here it says New Hampshire academic standards, and so we wanna be consistent and say state everywhere, so we'll change it to state academic standards wherever it's in New Hampshire. And then here, um in the last column here in fifty seven, um they're again questioning, are learning opportunities seen as courses? If so, why has the word courses been kept in some areas of the rule? Um this is a consistency thing in deciding, you know, what is the best fit depending on the language and what's intended.
But I think we've gone back and tried to make them all consistent, right, cause I think there were some that we missed, like, it should have been courses, not being, or should have been learning opportunities, and yeah.
Yeah, it's a huge document, and I may have missed things. Um and then again, they pointed out the um definition of terms, but those are defined. Um so if we go to page fifty nine. This is um talking about kind of the wording on this, but it's also suggesting that maybe this could go in the definitions section. And we did split up the graduation requirements and the um high school um class competencies and all of that. And it's used in the middle school section, and so it would make sense to move this as a definition into the definitions section, rather than live in its own section. Typically, things are defined within the rule section if it's only used in that rule section, but because we had split it up, it does make sense to move it, um.
So we will create a separate definition to cooperate with whatever the rest.
Yeah, so we'll just move that to the definitions section.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, okay. Page sixty, this is where you're gonna see the list at the high school level, um. But at the top of the page in D, who's, um, no, I just talked about things. Um so this is um a section that talks about accommodations um for curricular activities. And they were saying reasonable is a subjective term, you know, what's a reasonable activity, I mean, that can be solved by taking out the word reasonable. But they also talked about defining disabilities, but really, the definition there should be students with disabilities, which in turn is child with a disability, which is defined in statute. And so we can make that more clear as to what that entails by citing child with a disability as that definition.
Who's gonna cite the statute then?
Yeah, so I I'm a little. But it's, lawyers use, isn't reasonable in the law all the time, like, is it really that subjective? Cause it the statute, it's in statute all the time, you know, reasonable accommodation is reasonable, but because, and what, it is subjective. But it's in there to provide a bit of a. Boundary, a bit of a a subjective order, right, but it basically says you can't demand, you know.
Un.
Unreasonable, right, you can't make demands that would cost twenty million dollars, right, so that's why it's in so all over the law. So, I guess really unreasonable to include reasonable in, or or I'm just throw, I'm just, if we wanna take it out, we can take it out, um. You know, it just strikes me as one of those things where.
So you're gonna do that, right?
It it's a.
Well, reasonable accommodations is the language that's used in the ADA, and that, the the difference there is, there is a whole sort of body of law that determines what is.
Yes.
And what is not a reasonable accommodation, we deal with those all the time on the HR side here, as to whether or not, you know, something is a reasonable accommodation.
Yeah.
Um I I'm feeling that if we leave it in, the question that we're going to ask by OLS is, what are we giving the schools to help determine whether or not it's a reasonable accom- accommodation?
I mean.
What, by criteria, because for, like, just like I said, ADA has criteria, and I know what those established parameters are.
But isn't that decided with case law, right, typically?
Regs, case law, there's a, both on the ADA side.
Right, but we don't wanna define what reasonable means, right, uh in in this context, right, we don't wanna say. Uh reasonable means, if you don't have reasonable in there, and again, I don't I don't know the answer to this, I'm just, great discussion. It it's a common term in in statutes like these and rules like these. To create a general sense that um you can't make demands on a school district that would sap the entire district's resources.
Well, I'm concerned about reasonable.
It didn't need the G four jet to get to his field trip.
I mean, he's running, removing the word reasonable could actually require a undue burden upon a district to allow us to.
That's what we're concerned, that's what, that's my concern, like, one of the, in other words, reasonable allows a striking of a balance, that's what it's always, it's my interpretation, that's what it's used for.
Yeah. So.
So you, yeah, we have to give moon accommodation, but you can't demand the moon, so we have to come up with something that's reasonable, makes sense, um I think that's just sort of common sense usage, or common usage.
I mean, does defining students' disabilities therefore make reasonable more clear if we're defining that, I mean, just. Cause they 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 hit them both, so I don't know if.
So, no, I don't think, I think, they're separate, they're separate, they're separate, they're separate concerns, um.
I think those are separate, yeah.
Why don't I take that one to consider if I can add any language to kind of give additional parameters around?
Cause what's gonna happen is, we're gonna, if we leave it in, then they're gonna come back and say define, now we have to define reasonable, and we're like, okay, you know.
Don't make that up, I mean, seriously, like.
The the OLS is a common comment, is what criteria are, what criteria are they going to use in order, usually, it's what criteria is the state board gonna consider?
Sure, of course.
Here, it's what criteria should the local school district consider whether or not it's a reasonable accommodation or not? Let me think if I can find a way to give it a little bit of teeth, or or something, uh parameters to hang this on.
So who would have the final say on what is used in this, local school?
In this case, each local school district shall provide reasonable accommodation, so they'll do the initial adjudication, if they're not happy. If everyone's unhappy with how that comes up, then they could appeal that to you, that would be the first part.
To us, but but then they could, they don't like what we decide, they could have looked at this super board, so ultimately, that's where this put it up.
But 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 that may be the more important reason why they set forth some parameters to make, or criteria, I guess is probably a better word. To make sure that local school districts, or you upon review, can determine if that accommodation is correct.
Yeah, so accommodations that don't create undue burden.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm thinking undue burden, but I wanna think about this one.
Okay.
Yeah, we should think about it, I I hear what they're saying, but I just feel like it's such a commonly used term in certain situations, it's a strange objection.
Okay, E, sorry.
If necessary was never.
Why, I mean, they would say that's big too, right, um. Although.
Except except a parent, a parent.
It's a difference, it's a it's a different.
A parent would come to you with their child who who's in a wheelchair, and so it would be.
Necessary to need a ramp.
Would need a ramp, and so it it, no.
Okay. You have a necessary.
I mean, we we we, I, the the what comes to mind in my mind is elevators in schools, and we have to install them, and there are years that they are not used.
Yeah.
Because we don't have any student with a disability who needs use of that elevator, and those are exceptionally expensive to build and exceptionally expensive to maintain, but we must maintain those. So I think there's, I need to, I need to do a little bit of processing and think about whether I can add to this.
But again, like, so in the sense of, there being a lot of past practice here. It would probably be easily understood as reasonable to build an elevator for a child who can't use this there, like, that's just.
Or a ramp, thinking of that.
Like, you're not, you're, a a reasonable accommodation typically under the ADA is not, well, you will have a staffer care you up the stairs. That is not considered a reasonable accommodation, uh you can't do that at a restaurant, you have to provide a ramp, so.
Nor would we typically educate that student only on the first floor of the building.
Correct, right, so, anyway, I'm just saying, there's a lot of, there's a long history of reasonable standards being used in these kinds of cases, I I just don't think, just let you go to it.
So E, just a clarification, we have the wrong.
Yeah, so with this one, um they're seeming legislative intent, um and this is the list um of areas that schools need to offer classes in. Um but the way that it's worded right now, it's it's saying that they have, that students have to demonstrate proficiency of competencies. But they don't even have to necessarily take these classes, they just need to be offered, and so we just need to change the wording that, you know, the the. They shall be afforded or offered these opportunities, not that they have to achieve competencies in this.
Okay. Right, this is about what you're offering, not about what they're doing, yeah, and then we've already solved the family and consumer science question.
Yes, right, exactly. Yeah.
Could I ask, what are these drivers at?
It's on in uh one ninety two thirty, or one ninety three E, so it's not.
Typically not taught in our high schools.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Steve is has, Steve.
Yeah, thank you, um so driver's ed was moved from department bed to department safety around twenty eighteen sixty. Our only role in it is to consult with department safety on course.
Thank you, so it wasn't totally out of this stuff?
Yeah. We used to have that at some point.
And we think about equity, so we could argue for equity, but.
Okay, there we go.
It would require an exchange in state law, but it is very interesting, cause it's exceptionally expensive, of course, for students to take.
Yes, page sixty one.
Page sixty one, um they are asking, what is a collection of a defensible body of evidence? Um. And and so I know that that's very much a phrase that's used in competency based education, um. Is is this something that should be defined, or do we want to change the wording here? It's something, you know, for you to consider in terms of how to do here.
Sometimes I think Joe Card just gets so.
We think so too.
I mean. Common sense, common usage. I don't know that we need a definition here, once you start to get into that, I mean, it's, we, how.
We could just call it a collection of evidence, cause they have to demonstrate proficiency of competencies, you're demonstrating.
Well. So this is one of those things that we got feedback through the field, right, and the field wanted us to put in defensible body of evidence, and now Joe Card's saying that's problematic, you have to define it, blah blah.
Yeah.
They they wanna know what it is, because I guess, you know, it is like an industry term, so just.
It is an industry term.
It it should be proven, it should be proven.
Yeah, I would say that it's 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 a mixture of formative and substantive assessments that have been, I could come up with something pretty quickly. Um that's, it's gonna be jargony though, because it.
I guess so, yeah.
And I know that we're trying to avoid jargony, yes.
Yeah, avoid jargony, yeah, and jargon, right.
Well, I mean. Well, the reason I think we came up with the language with some grain is what I was thinking of, is those senior class projects that is more like project based, and that demonstrates competencies.
So you're gonna.
Rather than through assessments.
But a senior class project or something like that is assessment, I mean, all of this is assessment, right?
So we're basically calling it a collection of evidence demonstrating a student's achievement of competencies, right, cause if it doesn't demonstrate the achievement of competencies, then it's not defensible, right?
Right, and that's. Right. Yeah, I mean, I think we we picked that definition, so I just question the whole idea that we actually have that definition there, right?
But we don't have to, we adjust this, if we go to the green language, I think we're clear, we've responded to.
We don't.
Yeah. Oh, so you're you're, you're changing that language.
Correct, we're proposing that we just use the language from.
Yeah, I, okay, hold on. I mean, so this gets us into that back and forth with some folks who are worried about competency based education not being rigorous, right? So what we heard is you need the term defensible body of evidence, so the, right, defensible and the rigorousness of these, the 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 testing, the evidence, right? Then we get into just this this definitional problem. So I guess we're just not allowed to use common sense in any of these things, so we have to have very rigid definitions of things. So, you know, a collection of evidence demonstrating there's is not the same exactly as a defensible body of evidence. I'm I'm sure that defensible is really the best term, because that's really the subjective part of this, um that they're pushing back on. But. Let's think about it a little bit.
Again, we came up with, you know, a competency based assessment that supports a collection, or a collection of evidence demonstrating your student's achievement of competency.
I offer a two birds with one stone.
Yeah.
Offer, what was a rigorous body of evidence?
A rigorous collection of evidence, okay.
Yeah, a collection of riga- rigorous body of evidence, some of it like, cause that's what the defensible body, right, that I'll, like, tongue in cheek aside, that's what, like, really you were discussing, right, that was the demonstration of rigor.
Yeah. That was rigorous.
But it's a weird, it's a weird adjective to describe a body of evidence, you know, you you wouldn't use rigorous to describe that, that's why we were given the word defensible to put in there.
Yeah, right.
So what's wrong with collection of evidence?
Accompany.
I think we're late, I I think, I think we were just, there were lots, there were some people who were concerned that if we don't put some sort of.
I think it's okay.
Um adjective in there to.
Well, I think that particular term is is very much embedded in competency based education, and it's like part of it.
Yeah.
What the defensible?
Defensible body of evidence.
Right, cause cause if you're thinking about how it's very, like, so you do projects, you you present your portfolio of work, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um and there's just this sort of industry usage. Um and there's just this sort of industry usage of the term defensible to describe that. Um a- as opposed to just saying a body of work, right? So.
But it's it but it's this funny word that demonstrates achievement of competencies. So if it doesn't demonstrate, it's not like the enough body of work, so.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, right. I mean, if the if the evidence demonstrates your achievement, that's what you that's what you really want there, right?
Yeah, that's true.
How about a body of competent evidence?
I mean, we don't.
I mean, I think I think Frank's point is is well taken. A collection of evidence demonstrating your achievement, right? The evidence demonstrates that you've achieved it.
Yeah.
I mean, that that in itself is defensible, right?
Yeah, demonstrable evidence of of.
It it's actually like if you. House is demonstrate.
So keeping the buzz phrase defensible body of evidence is important. It sounds like it is to competency based education. What if we just move to definition?
Little higher.
Well, you have you have moved no, I moved over here because you missed that.
You know, what's what's saying is I think the green definition.
Yeah. It's all.
Is actually a little tighter. So you're changing it from defensible body of evidence in how they demonstrate proficiency. To a collection of ev- evidence demonstrating your achievement. That's tougher. That's a higher standard. So you're 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 actually removing the word defensive all cause it's subjective, but you're saying.
Just demonstrate.
The evidence demonstrates. It's conclusive. We demonstrate their achievement. So it's not subjective. The evidence has to show that you've achieved a competency. I think that's pretty that's pretty strong.
I think you could put Alan there if you want, but that's more of a process.
Yeah. Anyway, we can go with the big one if we get more feedback. I'm sure we get more feedback if it's. If it's off page.
Are you only when you're in a collection of just demonstrable evidence, so evidence demonstrating that just wants to do that, right?
All right, does it even have to be a collection?
Evidence demonstrating your student's achievement of competency.
That yeah, that is. It's absolutely strip it down.
Yeah, that's probably better.
Do you not have to collect the evidence, just for that?
Prove one evidence, that's fine.
Then.
Okay, no problem.
I mean, the evidence has to demonstrate you've achieved a competency, so we're just not calling it a collection, but you're still giving us evidence.
Evidence which demonstrates?
That's not correct.
Evidence that demonstrates.
Demonstrating that demonstrates.
Okay, let's go to next one definitely.
Um the comment here is that it's unclear what criteria and procedure must be met to receive department approval in number three. So they say assessment approved by the department if this school district has not developed an assessment.
So just to be clear, if they had already approved this rule, then nothing changed.
It yes, didn't it?
Yes.
I don't see that they do write that in there.
And I'd.
As approved by.
I mean, they would have said then writing the rule spelling out with the department's assessment, but criteria are.
You wanna fight this one or what?
No.
My preference would be to use the great language only because I.
Oh, okay. We came up with language, right? Assessment approval from demonstrating achievement of competency is the fifth of the. Okay, so we can use that the language, the second paragraph for the green language. Okay, that's better.
Okay. Sure.
This is a tough section, guys, sorry.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Um page sixty two um again, this comment is based on um the prior definition of competencies. Um but this is another spot um where we had taken out language um about. Graduation requirements being at the local level um so you know, if we if we wanted to say local, that's a spot that we could put it back in. But. You know, when those words were removed, it wasn't the intention that I mean, graduation requirements are.
Are the district's requirements, exactly. You know, they're supposed to define the competencies you need to graduate and so you kind of flow this one from the other, but.
I'm fine.
Can I ask a question there?
Yeah.
The and achievement of competencies and of the graduation requirements. We're saying they're basically like one is the aggregation of the other. Is there a different word for and that makes it clear? They they seem separately.
It could say leading to if you wanted to.
Leading to, but that that feels more.
Yep.
Again, that's why, cause they're they're cumulative com- you know, like concepts. And so when you try to squish them all together, it doesn't fit. You just.
Right. Yeah, but the and looks like two different ideas, which they're not.
Yeah. Okay.
J is again um based on the old definition of competencies in K um we have a variation on defensible body of evidence um versus defensible collection of work. Um and so they're unclear what that means or a proficient level. Have we did define proficient, so I don't know what the unclear is there. But are these left to the local school district to determine? How would they make that determination?
So by the way, when you define proficiency, aren't we already saying that there's a defensible evidence to show that we even have to go all these things, you know?
Yes, yes, and oh, yeah. Yeah, so you have to like remember that definition throughout, okay? Yes.
Yeah, you know.
Right?
Yeah, that's why it's suggested maybe making a definition of defensible body of evidence and then we could have kept it.
Yes, even the previous thing, you know, the whole circus of, you know, rewording it could be part of proficiency.
I think he's back on where we were on the page sixty one, but I don't know if it's defensible body of evidence or just saying can we use that same vernacular here?
Yeah, that's I yeah, and that's.
Well. Right, so.
We didn't use I thought we got rid of defensible body of evidence and we had.
We did, no, the green the green language.
Evidence demonstrating a student's achievement of competency. Yeah, so we wanna just carry the green language over?
Then that's what he was referencing.
Yeah, I I was even suggesting that as a proficiency, you know, that is a which which is backed by a certain uh demonstrable. So if you keep using the word proficiency, then you don't have to say it has to be demonstrable with the demonstrable uh evidence and such. Because you're defining proficiency as that.
Well, so this is, yeah, let's see.
Proficiency means the minimum student performance required to satisfy the achievement of a competency.
Yeah, so there's a dispensable uh there's a uh uh evidence of competency there, you know, then you're talking about an evidence again. Can we keep using the word proficiency? This is.
So it's students, in other words, you're saying students may achieve competencies and award a credit through student demonstration of competencies.
Yeah, that's all.
Right, of of proficiency of proficiency, right?
Yeah. Proficiency, yeah, because the proficiency have already been decided.
Yeah. Of proficient uh. So can we just say.
Can we just say through how it's uh the awarded credit through evidence demonstrating a student's achievement of competency? Just say through the same language that I use in the.
That's great.
Oh, my God.
But then it's consistent with what we just did on page sixty one.
Yep. I think that's weird.
So we can drop the goal for higher learning opportunities?
Or and then we just go the or other assessment evidence at a proficient level gained through prior learning opportunities.
So students may achieve competencies to be on one, right, and of this.
Demonstrating a student's achievement of competencies, or other assessment at a proficient level gained through prior learning opportunities.
Gotcha.
Then we're good. We have another break.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, we moving on to the next page?
Page sixty three.
Sixty three, okay. Um there's another column here um for you know, it says courses or learning opportunities. And so they're saying are they the same? Is that the same as a course of study? And we'll just not use these terms consistently. The comment applies to the next page too. So um again, deciding if they mean the same thing, if we need to use them both, if we want to use them both.
I think we have decided that we didn't we were inconsistent in some places. We didn't consistently use it throughout there. So then you're proposing the language as forty three courses across as opposed to forty three learning opportunities?
I think so.
Right.
So so couple of things about this, like I think we need to back up. Our original rules as they exist today required forty three courses to be distributed among our caller. When we did the when you all had the initial proposal, we had taken the forty three out. Third column, big important change that I think was made during that working group session was a a decision to move that forty three back in. So I'm I'm bringing that to the rest of the state board's attention. I want it to always there, but I think that's number one important thing, that we brought the forty three back into the rules. That brings us up to what was finished at that that working group. Then we have sort of this other comment that was made by OLS regarding course of study versus courses. And I think the proper use here is courses and we just need to make sure that we're using that consistently.
Is it courses or is it learning opportunities? That's not a question, so that's the question. In other words, if we use it consistently with everything else that we've done, cause we again, we had learning opportunities in there previously. All our intention was in the working group was to reinsert the forty three and allow the schools to distribute those learning opportunities across those forty three. Right? So I'm not sure why we would that you it would be an inconsistent use of courses, cause those are the learning opportunities, aren't they?
I think it's because we use course of study.
So are you suggesting that are learning opportunities outside of courses?
Compliment.
Yep.
There are definitely learning opportunities outside of those courses.
So so I can read you the definition. Learning opportunities means educational experience, including but not limited to, as we already adjusted, in-person instruction, online, blended, self.
So.
Like and so all of these forty three, we're saying those are all learning opportunities, you know, available. So I think learning opportunities is the right vernacular there to be consistent.
So the total of forty three is learning opportunities, so we'll bring back in learning opportunities.
And we just.
We don't we don't wanna put forty three on on that. Courses though, that's where I think we're doing it.
Oh, that's where there was, even though it said, but we've added to that definition of learning opportunities in person.
So.
So how do you define?
Yeah, there's a little bit of a valid.
Yeah, I was gonna say I I went to one of the educator feedback sessions and there was a comment there about eliminating the term learning opportunity and replacing with courses. Cause I think that's what people are familiar with.
Yeah.
And yet I was sitting at the ELO table. So there's, you know, a whole area of education that's.
Learning opportunities.
Focus on learning opportunities and I'm I'm not sure if it's just this transition from.
Yeah.
What has been to what we're hoping to be with this competency based shift, that people are just comfortable with the the course. If you're an English teacher, you're teaching English, it's a course. Um but if if we're gonna make many opportunities available to learn the same sorts of things that are in those very well-defined courses. Then you know, we're we're sort of fighting the the competency uh concept by bringing things back to well-defined boxes.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say that I you hit it right on. I think the the intent in the working session was to ensure that there are forty three courses. But um so that there would be the like opportunities for students who cannot might not have the opportunity to take advantage of some of the other learning opportunities. Like a V lax class or an internship. So it was to ensure that the minimum standard was indeed forty three onsite courses. But that was no way to limit what a student was able to do or replace, but to ensure that there was some sort of minimum standard for the number of courses.
Are both learning opportunities and courses, do they get you credits? So an internship and.
Yeah.
I'm trying to understand the difference in that case.
Yeah, so we go back to if you look back at the definition of learning opportunity means the educational experiences included that order, do you online and blended, self?
No, no, remember we added in-person instruction.
Yeah.
In-person instruction, but it also includes.
Two, yeah, all the other things, yeah.
All on.
Great, it's all the learning opportunities, courses and not courses, yeah.
So all of the.
All of those. And so.
Then how do you define courses, that sort of?
I don't think course is defined.
That is a course. If it's if you learn, you get credit, you spend time, then that is a basically it's a course.
Course of study is defined, we don't define course. Course of study, that is a progression of competency.
It's that's different.
Yeah, but course is the industry standard term, you know, any anywhere you go, you talk about sort of learning opportunity that.
So the difference we're trying to create is learning, we're trying to like focus on the learner, which is that that vernacular of learning opportunity. It's about like, cause you're gonna go to a course, but maybe you didn't learn anything. The whole point of having a course is to learn something, right? So we're trying to focus on the learner as much as possible.
Okay, so so then let's define the course as a as a learning, no, all I'm saying is that the two words have, you know, you're saying it as if they're two different words. They're actually they're the same.
The course and in-person learning opportunity?
So we just uh.
Will say yes.
That's that's the question. I don't know, it could be.
Will say yes.
Well, wouldn't you define algebra one and algebra two are courses?
Yeah.
Right? I mean, they're specifically aimed at. That's a course. Cause of course a study, maybe mathematics, you know, it's a broader term, so I.
So this is not course of study. Does this so just try and comp do course versus learning opportunities? How would you define those now?
Yeah. Well, I think they of of course, my my common sense definition of a course would be a structured, you know, um a structured learning opportunity. Like algebra one that would have a certain sequence of the a learning opportunity could be, I'm gonna take a robotics course or I'm gonna learn all the same concepts that are being taught in the algebra one course in robotics. By application of different principles. So yeah, it gets it gets tough to, but I think the the course is the the comfortable definition, uh the legacy definition. You know, what what schools encompass and 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 I think.
So we have this independent study, which is a course.
Mm-hmm.
So what you're saying is an independent study may not be a a course, it could be a learning opportunity.
Yeah.
So are question is, are we creating more confusion by by splitting it up into these gray areas, you know, and.
Well, we we are in the sense that we're trying to say that there are more than in-classroom experiences. To learn different subjects, if we're not limited to in-classroom experience.
Okay.
And in extent, learning opportunity may take place outside of the classroom. It may take place inside of the classroom as a as an independent study. Uh where a student is moving along at a different pace based on their on their needs and.
But your learning opportunity also said classroom instruction plus everything else, so that is also a course, so.
Can we change learning opportunity to include in-person instruction? So like we feel like that we've conflated those two as the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. Right, it's broader, it's broader. Again, it's focused on how does a person learn many ways to do that.
So the way I can, this is my conceptualization of it, is the learning opportunities is the broad category. And there are subset subsets of it, of which courses is one subset, right? There's various other subsets. So you can say courses or, but like as as I think you just said, right, right? If you go back to our definition, courses are a component of that broader term learning opportunity. I think I think it is. I think it's legacy. I think right's right. Like it keeps going back to like people understand the legacy language of course, and it's hard for people to break that paradigm.
Uh Mark, do you know, um so under the forty three courses now. Does does well, it's now forces. I mean, it's existing. Uh are there districts that fulfill that requirement with. Online courses or other things that aren't a classroom course?
So I I can give you, I know you're seeking.
I'm just curious what that.
Yeah, so um every school, every high school, this is high schools that we're talking about now, they'll they'll publish a program of study.
Yeah, yeah. Sure, yeah.
That program of study identifies all of their learning opportunities per se.
Yeah.
And within those learning opportunities, they'll have their courses.
Yeah.
So they will have credential licensed teachers teaching a min- at minimum forty three courses that students can access in person. However, within the nuance of that, you might have some students that say, hey, listen, uh you know, I I'm gonna demonstrate this differently. And you know, you work with that with with those students to demonstrate it differently. It could be through an internship. It could be through an extended learning.
It could be through an internship, it could be through an extended learning opportunity, where you have an ELO coordinator who then does the crosswalk between their experience and, and the local expectations for meeting competency. At minimum, this forty-three means that in a, a high school's program of study, they offer, you know, we, you say we can distribute it a little bit differently, but at least six English language arts courses, at least X number of courses in the mathematics program. So that just ensures that for all students, there is at least this many in-person classes that they can take advantage of, and that the school have licensed educators who are there to teach those courses, based on student signup and student request.
So, can we in that case call it all learning opportunities and leave it at that? Because just bringing two different terms is more confusing. It's fine to call it learning opportunities, it's a little more modern.
I would say that, but if that means that you don't have to offer it, because the learning opportunity is more expansive, and what we're talking about here with the forty-three is that at minimum, you have to offer forty-three classes. You got more learning opportunities on top of that, in fact, you should. But at minimum, you need a program of study that shows that you're offering forty-three courses at your school.
Then let's define courses also, so then it means you need to define course and learning opportunity separately.
Then perhaps you do, uh, but, you know, that's my, that's my understanding of the forty-three, that's my understanding of the minimum requirement, and that was to ensure that students who may not have the flexibility, based on all sorts of different things, to access some of those external learning opportunities, would have the opportunity at their local school to, yeah, to access some options.
I agree. So then how would you, let's define course.
I would say a course is a locally, a, a locally held class that students can enroll in, something along those lines, threesome. Is anybody gonna get in trouble with V-Lax? If some of them maybe meet the requirement with V-Lax.
But that's when you work with a student to coordinate their schedule. So some student might be a professional skier, and they say, I can't do my English ten, because.
No, no, I'm just concerned if, is there anybody, are there any schools that are off, of the forty-three are using V-Lax to meet that forty-three, is my question.
Um, I would say if they are, that should be, like, if, so if it's based on, like, staffing or personnel, then I would say they're not doing it to, uh, meet the minimum requirement. They might be doing it to augment what they do, so for example.
So they're getting to the forty-three without V-Lax?
Yeah.
So I'm trying to make sure we don't go into a corner and they're like, oh crap, now I gotta like, do something.
Well, and I think it also depends, so if you look at a K three-eight school, a K three-eight school, they're sort of, if they're identified as a middle school, has different requirements than a K three-eight school who's considered an elementary school. Because some of that is foreign, is world languages and family consumer science and things like that that are identified in the minimum standards or whatever. So, um, I, what we're talking about here with the forty-three are the high school in-person courses that are in your program of study. So that's the minimum requirement right now. And again, just to ensure that students who access their education at their local high school have some choices.
Look, so I totally agree. All I'm saying is that if you leave it as forty-three learning opportunities, then fine, we're all set. If the moment you say courses, then we need to have a.
I would, I would, I would say the opposite. I say you have to say course, I think you have to say courses, because if you say learning opportunities, that would give you the, the ability to say, well, we don't have to offer it locally, and that's going to, that's gonna make it so some kids can't access it.
No, but the, the, uh, learning opportunities include in-person, all those, so.
This is in-person instruction, but that's not necessarily a course.
Yeah, so Raj, I think what Mark was saying, he wants forty-three opportunities for students to have in-person instruction in their own school. And if you, you can use it just learning opportunities, you'll have schools that'll just have twenty classes, and then they'll have twenty-three other learning opportunities.
Got it, so can we call it in-person learning opportunities? So then, then you don't have this.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Right, but.
Well, but it, yeah, locally, in-person, just not.
So, this is where it gets a little complicated, right? Because in-person learning opportunities, then you have to tighten that to on-campus in-person learning. It's because of ELO or Handkerchief, like, or because it's within the town, right?
I, I think we should define.
So, how do you, this is where I think we're, like, we don't wanna, I hear the concern. However, if we write it too tightly, you know, tiny districts, you have great opportunity here with the local, to do something that would be wonderful to, uh, offer a course, to satisfy this forty-three, and you wanna do it over here. But you can only do it on top of also offering it here, in the building on campus, right? And so, you know, do we wanna shut down all of those things and say, everything that's offered in a slightly different model has to be on top of the forty-three? I mean, that's what I think a lot of people would want us to do. I just think we need to be careful about how we, how much we tighten that. Part of this is, like, again, to focus on competency base.
Yeah, so, yeah, school districts shall have responsibility and flexibility and intent in full endeavors as educational purposes.
Terrifying, it would not take away the, a local school district's opportunity to come to the state board and ask for innovation, uh, ask for an exception to this rule under innovation support. So they can store that opportunity, they would just need to present it and explain why that learning, those learning opportunities were still needed.
But that's a whole separate, like, this is focused here, right, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I get, I get that, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not, actually wanna allow kind of, obviously not competency-based, and making sure that districts are providing the minimum that they need to provide to every student, right? I hear what you're saying, Mark, but you, you don't wanna have these things not available to every student, I get that, I think, but.
No, they have to have them available, because it doesn't have to have the learning opportunities available.
Right, so what are you saying is like, like, okay, so if something's, like, some of these things might not be accessible to every single student, and you wanna make sure that that, that, that minimum forty-three have to be accessible to everybody.
That's what we're saying.
Right, and we wanna say that.
No.
But if it, but if it's outside of the building, then it has to be accessible to them, because they gotta have, make sure, and they can get those forty-three.
At the end of it, doesn't, doesn't make a difference, we are caught, caught, talking about competency-based learning. At the end of the call, whatever the, uh, education, if I have the competence, if the child has the compet- competence, doesn't matter if I taught as a course or a learning opportunity, or, you know, can we give that up? Freedom to the school districts to do what they have, at the end of it, the kid, the kid has to have the competency, that's all, right?
So, so when, what we're being, the feedback we're getting here is, if we leave it as learning opportunities, put a minimum forty-three, that allows districts, gives them that flexible option, to create an education system at the local level that uses ELOs, work-based learning, alternative learning plans, blended self-guided classes, as part of that forty-three, so that not, so that they wouldn't necessarily have forty-three on campus in a classroom with a certified teacher teaching that. That's, that's what they wanna protect, is that forty-three with the certified teacher in the room onsite. That's what they're trying to protect. That's why they're pushing back against learning opportunities. So, if we keep it learning opportunities, that allows more flexibility and it eats away, so maybe they'll offer forty, not forty-three, maybe they'll offer twenty-seven in a traditional way, but they'll come up with other ways to offer the rest.
We're still getting to forty-three, yeah.
Right, we're still, right, so, so that's the conversation we're having. If we say courses, keep courses and define it as onsite, on the school property, um, it means all these learning opportunities that are in addition to the in-person class have to be on top of that forty-three.
So, my question is, if you're developing rules based on the fear that the two percent chance that something else may go wrong, we are actually not leaving the ninety-eight percent to have the freedom to do the right thing, you know, as long as they meet the end goal of competency, you know, so.
Yeah.
And, and.
And you're maybe rules against, against, you know, on fear of some two percent, and some, somebody may do that, so let's actually put a rule.
And, and the, 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 the greatest amount, that is, your, your objective is hardly best serve students. And serve students by providing the courses that, that's what they're needs, and not all of them.
So, so let me just throw something else out there, just to do the conversation, just to, thank you. So we got the forty-three, we're all kind of just gonna default to the forty-three. Is there opportunity here to say, um, you have to offer forty-three learning opportunities? Uh, twenty-three of which, or just twenty-three of which, right? Whatever, have to be, thirty of which have to be in-person classroom by traditional, traditional classroom. Give them that some flexibility, just a verb for discussion. Um, yeah, maybe we stick with the forty-three courses in class, you know, all that kind of stuff, but, you know, again, we get back to this, we keep being told, we don't respect local control, you gotta give us local control. Every time we try to give you local control, you're told, don't give us local control mandate. And frankly, getting really tired of that, so, um, we have the opportunity here to give districts a little bit of flexibility, while still maintaining, right, some of the current system. Maybe we stick with the forty-three, just throwing this out there for a discussion.
I'm just thinking, forty-three rigid learning.
Risk, risk.
Yeah, I was just.
Oh, Phil has something.
Sharepoint, so.
Phil. Yeah, so, I mean, a, a couple things.
Yeah.
One, given that this goal, the goal is to advance competency-based education, does the lo-, is the goal determining where the education happens? Or the way it is structured in order to support the advancement of competency? So, like, I, I would not want the location conversation to, to track, I don't think it is, I was saying if, if it's, if it's a separate issue from the how education is structured. Yeah, I know, they're, they're, they're similar, I, they're related, but they're not exactly the same, right? So, you know, you could have, uh, so just for, yeah, I'm, we're just having an open discussion here, right? Learning opportunities, uh, accessible to all students locally, right? I mean, you could play with language there that makes clear, you can't reach this goal by offering a bunch of online courses. Like, we're not, I don't wanna allow that, right? I wanna, I want local engaged in-person student-teacher interactions, like, that's.
So, but I.
We wanna encourage that and, and push towards that. But at the same time, are we gonna prevent innovation here? And like, right? And I, and, and I'm gonna throw up a, a roadblock and say, um, yeah, we're going towards, you know, this new model, but you have to do it exactly the same way as always. So, can you stop real quick? I'm sorry, right?
Yeah, go.
No, that's where the competency really comes. Yeah, go ahead.
So, Drew, then I'd like your compromise of saying, like, X many of which must be, like, maybe that's like the phase or process that would be more palatable to the, to the systems that currently stand. But I think it would be a, a total of these forty-three courses for learning opportunities that at least expands the potential that the core forty-three don't all have to be courses and everything else additional.
But I do think, I, I, I hear Mark's point, and I think it's a very valid point, to make sure that that forty-three is accessible to all students, right? I mean, I think that's part of the minimum, we wanna do something, you know, so this is where it gets a little bit complicated, when we're thinking about a new delivery model or a new way of thinking about things, but we do wanna make sure that kids, that these are accessible. We don't wanna create a situation where, you know, we're excluding all students, so.
Could you just say, like, learning opportunities accessible to all?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because I know that's the discussion that we're writing.
Um, in P above, it does say courses or learning opportunities, um, as specified in P above. And then it switches to just courses or just learning opportunities, so maybe there's a consistency issue there. I mean, maybe you can just call it courses and learning opportunities, or.
Or learning opportunities. So, totally kind of what Phil was saying, right?
Just say courses or work, same as acceptable for all.
Just same like, yeah.
And I think some schools that are gonna be like, yep, we're sticking with forty-three courses, and you know, some they're like, I'm gonna try something else.
But, just, I just wanted to point out, like, the OLS comment is again asking, are learning opportunities the same as courses? And so I think we, that's where we need to differentiate the clarity for OLS, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, no, that you're, you're getting it back to.
Yeah.
Look, we could certainly define courses as the same, similar, right? I mean, or we could define a course differently, but, again, is a course, is a course, uh, in-person, is it necessarily?
And that's, yeah, we have to figure out what we want that to be.
I can think of, there's a teacher ratio, all for learning opportunities, only for courses.
Some high schools offer courses that aren't in-person.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I, I just, you know, it's, it's really nuanced, but I think that you have, you know, you're hitting it on the head. What if, you know, what if connecting with the local business in one town where the business is right next door is real doable, but in another town where they don't have that type of business, that becomes undoable? So, um, and who's gonna pay for the transportation and all that kind of stuff that goes along with it? So I think it's really just, again, just about assuring that there's some minimum level of equitable opportunity for students. And what happens with a course that's in that program of study that is connected to a licensed individual, is it might not just be in-person at that school, but it could be, you know, it could be their senior project, that could be one of the things that you offer in your program of study, and that could, um, be connected to digital literacy, as you were talking about before. So there, there's nuance, all sorts of nuance there, but the intent with that, again, the intent with that forty-three is to ensure that there are options available to all students, regardless of their circumstances.
Look, and, and this is, and, and I already mentioned the senior project, like, so this is where we get into some complications, right? Because, so let's say some kid in, you know, a school just says, I wanna do my senior project, uh, repairing hiking trails in White House.
Yeah.
That is not available to all kids.
Right.
By definition, that can't be, right? So, but the senior project is a course, so again, we get into these difficulties of saying, okay, every opportunity must be equally available to all students, but if we do that, we're cutting out stuff like these certain senior projects, which some kids can't do.
Right, so you build choices in courses, and you build circumstances in choices, and, and.
So, I, I just, I, I, I think we probably have to come back to this. But in the meantime, we should work on a definition of course. I'm a little brave about right now to try to come up with one, uh, but we should work on that.
I mean, you could just to, to, to just, just point, I mean, we find learning opportunities means educational experiences, including but not limited to in-person instruction, online, blended, blah, blah, blah. We could just say learning opportunities and, or, or a course means, right? And then, then same to, if they're the same thing, if we're gonna use them interchangeably, then just, just make the definition the same.
Either, either do the same, both are the same, or if you want to, as Mark says, if the course has been defined differently, then learning opportunity includes courses as part of that, you know?
Yeah.
Then my other question was, uh, learning opportunities may not have a teacher, you know? So, does the teacher-student ratio even, like, maybe only for the courses, the teacher-student ratio comes in? You know, if you're doing other learning opportunities, doesn't even matter? So, yeah, or, there is an opportunity to separate the two, and then define it separately.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, just bookmark it.
Okay, bookmarked. Page sixty-four.
So we're getting into the list again, we've got some of the same things we've already talked about. And do you wanna point out here that physical education was inadvertently left out? It was my mistake, and it's been put back in, that was brought up in, uh, public comment and by, um, OLS, so it's been added in, it wasn't meant to be left out, made a boo-boo.
Are you sure? I read one of those public comments, I didn't really get that.
That was all me, um, and so again, and this is, you know, with technology education, I think this is just, the statute has been updated and the rules have not. The statute now says engineering and technology education, um, if they want that to reflect what the statute says, because we have technology education, that's just because it's been updated.
I'm gonna recommend that we just say change that to match the statute, where it says engineering and technology, so, that's okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Are you interviewing electives as, elective, electives? Are you, would you be giving any op, anything about electives that they can take?
Oh, we have.
No, that's separate, that, because that would be outside of the list of, um, of the, yeah.
Um, so sixty-five, um, again, there, this is the same comment that we just decided we're gonna bookmark for now.
Of course, yeah, learning opportunities, yes.
Yes, um, and then at the bottom of the page, this was a comment made regarding fiscal impact, um, and because we changed the wording a little bit, and, um, it's requiring. It's requiring that the school pay for these things when a student takes an alternate, again, program we've changed it back to. And it's unclear whether this means that if the school district wants to offer remote learning, it must pay for it. And we offered up some different language, because I think the issue here was that. It should be within their district, we weren't trying to make it read so that the school would be paying for anything else. We're just saying if they have a remote, if they're doing remote learning within the school district, or they're doing an alternative program within their district, then it should be included.
If it's a district program, they're.
Right. Um, and I didn't make that green, but that should have been green suggested like in that column there. So the big change there would be district-based remote learning, alternative programs or learning opportunities.
So if they were outside the district?
Right, so originally what, what the rule said is, um.
Well, let me just, I'll have you, so what we're trying to avoid is some kids says like, well, I wanna go to Boston and take a clapstone music from the Symphony Harmonic and they'd somebody. Well, it says you have to buy my equipment, you gotta buy me a cello, because that's what I'm gonna do, right, so if it's a district offered program, then they would supply the equipment.
Yeah, so originally it, it just said in remote learning, to participate in remote learning, so if they need the equipment to participate in remote learning, the district has provided. And so, we just made sure it says that it's district-based. Um, next page is competency comment. So page sixty-seven. Again, at the top, this is just, again, a suggested spot to put that in district or local, but again, changing that definition of competency makes it so that it shouldn't be necessary, this is sixty-seven.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. With twenty minutes left, would this be appropriate time to have that larger conversation, that you all wanna, depending, so you could have Mark at the table?
Sure.
Because if we're back to competency, you know, this is what it is.
You're talking about the, where we changed the definition of competency, right?
At the beginning of the meeting, we sort of, yes.
Exactly. We had an O L S comment, so Mark, the comment was, we got a comment from O L S on our definition of competency. Because one ninety-three H one defines competency, so we had defined competency, but then there's a statutory definition of competency that we all forgot while we were writing these things. And so.
Oh.
That's the one that we wanted Mark in, right?
We were talking about proficiency versus mastery as well, which goes into that.
Oh, okay, we can do that as well, yeah, and proficiency versus mastery. Which one, is that the one?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I didn't.
It's okay, there's been a lot.
There's been a lot of people arguing about that.
I've had also these five times this morning, but I think the conversation we avoided, what we wanted Mark for was, what's the level?
And everybody's want Mark to do like.
And the statute.
That's, that's.
Yeah, and the statutory definition of competency has some of those concepts in it, which is why we were kind of, you know, looking for Mark's.
So we're looking for proficiency.
So this is all the way back to the definitions, we're looking at page, page three and. And then proficiency is on page.
Okay, yeah, do you want proficiency or mastery, where are we going here? Do you have a speech running?
Uh, so, um, I, I appreciate the fact that I'm able to.
I don't know if, others can hear.
Well, do you want me to say it in your mic?
Just so that you can hear it next to a mic.
Yeah. Um, I think that the feedback has essentially been, does removing the word mastery lower the bar? And it's nuanced, because we're dealing with a minimum standard and. Can, can you just for, for anybody on record, just introduce yourself? Sure, my name is Mark McLean, I'm the executive director of the New Hampshire School Administration of Research Association. Yeah, thanks, Adam. Okay, I've not seen the statutory definition.
Well, just, let's talk proficiency versus mastery, I guess that was the main thing, I didn't intend to introduce the subject.
Gotcha. Um, so when, when, I, I've spoke with this board a few times before about the differences and. Mastery at an educational level is highly nuanced, because it's based on learning level and the concept that's being introduced. And the fact that that concept is probably gonna be introduced in a different way with more depth and more expectation later on. So mastery in educational parlance isn't necessarily what the average person on the street is going to look at mastery as. Mastery as being, you know, I'm the absolute expert in this field. So I would suggest that mastery is an aspirational term, but I think it's okay to have aspirations within a rulemaking document. You think about things that we get in rulemaking all the time, think about No Child Left Behind, way back in the day, that was one hundred percent proficiency in all assessment was the goal, right? So there, I think there's aspirational stuff that's put forth in rulemaking all the time. So I would say perhaps a good definition for mastery could be the process through which students demonstrate appropriate levels of skills and knowledge of a competency area. Through a locally developed body of evidence, but now we're back into body evidence, so I wrote this up before that last, before that last, but it's jargony. And in order to earn course credit, students must successfully pass based on local expectations, all competency areas in each course. So one of the conversations that we had last time was, do we raise the level of mastery by saying that students have to pass three or four? Three, three out of four, for example, and I said, I'll, I'll raise that, they have to pass all of it. So I do think that mastery is nuanced, because of the fact that, you know, we're talking about pre-K through twelve education. Students are then gonna go on to higher learning in, or college and career, or they'll get certification and industry credentials. But mastery and application has meant that students will demonstrate based on what the local framework for competencies are in that particular.
So just to be clear, so Mark, what we're doing with this on U, there's a definition of proficiency, is proficiency, this is on page seven. Proficiency means the minimum student performance required to satisfy the achievement of competency, the term also includes proficient. So the question is whether or not we would replace proficiency with mastery there.
Oh, okay.
Right, like, we're not coming up with a new definition, we're just saying, do we wanna use proficient or do we wanna use mastery?
Yeah. Yeah, again, I think it's, it's a word game, I think, you know, essentially, I think what folks are saying is they prefer mastery. Because it's aspirational in nature and it shows that students are demonstrating what they can do across all the competence areas based on their learning level and where they are.
So, so, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm just trying to keep going, because I know we have a tight time, but. I mean, so for example, in the, the conversation we were having before was, so at V-Lax, you have to get an eighty-five or above to be a master. So are we suggesting that students who are below eighty-five can't progress? Or are we suggesting that mastery now means, okay, because we get kids who get seventies and we're moving along, right? So if you get a seventy in a class, does that enough, is that considered mastery, like, if we're?
Well, I, I think it's, it's different in every, like, some schools will have four through two-one scale, and some schools will have proficient. You know, distinguished proficient, reaching, and not there yet, so we have so many, there's so much nuance relative to what does an eighty-five mean in V-Lax compared to what does a seventy-five mean in.
Or, or what is a distinguished proficient versus proficient, but they have kids who are proficient that go forward and not distinguished proficient. So are we asking that all the kids get the distinguished proficient, is that what mastery equals? Again, just, I'm trying to make sure that we're, we're realistic of, I think that's the concern, is we're concerned that we're gonna do something and all of a sudden it goes like, oh my gosh, we can't hit that. And for every kid.
Well, so the, the history on this is that in two thousand and five, almost twenty years ago, at three oh six point two seven D stated. That credit will be granted through the demonstration mastery of the competency. So the word mastery has been used in application for twenty years. And what I'm, what I'm sharing is that in application, what that means is that each competency area has assessments connected to it. You have to pass those assessments based on the local standard, whether that's an eighty-five, whether it's a three, whether it's a C, whether.
Sixty-five percent is, you can't land this school district, and you're a mastery at that point, okay.
It, it, it. It, it could, but it's just so, I don't think it does in most cases, because what I see is that you'll have. On a, on a four-point scale, you'll have a, a four and a three and a.
Well, but a kid gets a D in a class, and he still gets to graduate, he could have a sixty-five and then get a D, right?
Potentially, yeah, potentially.
If you're my list, I don't know. I mean, your kid's graduating this year, they're gonna have Ds in classes, so, and that means they probably got a sixty-five, so I just wanna make sure that we're.
So, isn't the relevant part that, that these are the minimum standards, so what do we want, what's the bottom that we want for kids? We want them to be proficient, we don't, we would totally fail them if at least they don't become proficient.
Agreed, so, you know, I'm just, I think it's, I'm trying to react to what some of the feedback has been, but.
Kirby, I'm just trying to have a conversation relative to that, to make sure that we don't say something to people like. Okay, these kids are mastering it before they get out, and then all of a sudden a kid gets out and he's like, but he only got a sixty-five percentage if you look at his numeric score in this class. And you guys graduated him and you're like, well, sixty-five percent turns out to mastery, I don't, like, I just wanna be sure we're clear, like, like whatever we're telling people is an honest assessment of where we are. I don't wanna put back schools into a position where all of a sudden they're saying like, well, if I don't get these kids to eighty-five percent, I don't fit to graduate.
But I get, I think what we're saying, Kirby, if I'm wrong, what I'm hearing you say is, you know, every school district is gonna define mastery in its own way, in terms of mastering the competency. The old rule from two thousand and five said master the competencies, so by us. If we put mastery in there instead of proficiency. That is not going to actually change. Because the districts get to decide what mastery means, so in other words. We're not dumping anything down, we're raising a bar, the districts get to decide what proficiency means and what mastery means, and so whatever term we use really doesn't matter. Because they're gonna pass kids based on their own skill that they come up with, and using the term mastery does not actually raise the bar. And that's what, you know, and so, in which case, she's mastered, right? So, because there's no definition of mastery, there's no state standard that says to master a competency, you have to achieve three-fourths of perfection. Like, how are you, three out of four or seventy-five percent?
Like, so V-Lax says eighty-five percent, but somebody else might say sixty-five percent.
Exactly, so there's no state standard that says what mastery is, because there's not. Every district gets to decide, does mastery score in a seventy, does it score in a eighty-five, is it? Doesn't really matter, they're gonna get them, I just. So if we use the word mastery versus proficient, like, is anything, either way, will things change in the field? I, I don't know that they will, I think what we heard was from, from some people who worried that proficiency, using proficient would dumb down somehow the standards. When in fact. Proficiency is what you have to achieve to move on, it's not lowering anything. So I guess my question to you is that. Whichever word is used, do you think it's gonna actually change the way students are advanced from, from one grade or.
Drew, you both said the magic word, what does pass, because you said that is something required to pass it, that if. So mastery or, you know, proficiency or wizardry or whatever, I don't know, like, it's all in different levels, but at the end of it, in a school, I have to pass the exam to, is that. I, I understand if you talk about mastery as eighty-five, then kid who just passes doesn't graduate.
Well, so one, one school has defined it as eighty-five, but another school might define it as, and so, so.
You know? Yeah.
Okay, so there, there's no step by step for, for Mark, sorry. Yeah, I guess, I guess, yeah, just to sum up my question, if we use one word or the other, is that gonna actually make a difference in, in the way kids are promoted or advanced? I, I, so pragmatically, it's not gonna make a difference, but I think we're talking about, you know, word choice has meaning, right, words have meaning. So I think if we're striving towards continual improvement, then the words that we use matter. And mastery in education isn't binary, I think we're searching for, it's either you mastered it or you didn't, either you got an eighty-five or you didn't. So if you did, you got an eighty-four, you didn't master it, if you got an eighty-five, you did master it. Mastery isn't a binary term in education, the way it's, the way it's been used in application, there's, there are levels of mastery. So based on where you are, who you are, what level you're at, you know. Liz is probably gonna have to master things at a higher level that means she's much smarter than her. So mastery is something different for every kid, so I just think that mastery becomes.
Well, aren't the issues that they're already been defined in.
It's defined as mastery right now, so I just don't know, you know, if, if this is, if I was sitting in your seat, I'm hearing from the field. The word mastery is more aspirational, and that's something that people feel better about, then I would say, great, let's keep it at mastery. And we'll continue to talk about student achievement in terms of mastery, and that's our goal for everyone. Thank you.
Phil.
You go.
Want to challenge? Yeah, so, true, I'm somewhat with you around mastery versus proficiency at this point, like, how's it actually gonna change what's happening inside of classrooms? And recognizing that mastery does not mean master, right, that like, master, like, would be like, okay, you have the tenacity of the body of knowledge or something, whereas mastery would be specific to a competency. So I think it gets to like how developmentally appropriate the competencies that are inside of a certain course or. Other alternative form of instruction or learning, that, so I think, to me, it comes down to a couple things. One, I think is breaking that past model, right, like, I think, like, also, obviously, education should be almost duking away the social promotion. And moving to like, does this one individual is human, are they, are they mastering or proficient, or whatever the word is, on the competency is necessary to advance to the next level? Which I think to me gets down to, and we're to see any of this take root at the local level, I think it's, it's less in the standards. And more in, like, we're the technical advisories for how a whole system is built on passing, it was built on, you have to get like a sixty-five and move on. Reverse engineer into competency-based, that's gonna master, it's just a very different approach. I think that it's gonna, like, how that actually manifests and how we help support the manifesting of that in the classroom, I think that's where the billboard is.
Like, again, personally, I, I like the term mastery, I think that's, I would like to set a bar where every student. Has to master every competency before they can move on. I would love that, I think that's the way, what we are aspiring to. And if. There's such a low bar for mastery, that you're not actually mastering the subject, to go on, that, that's a, that's a problem. So. I, I don't, well, I don't use masters of competency, that's fine with me, I, I, our. Reason for changing it to proficient was because we didn't wanna. Prohibit a district from advancing students the way they already do on, you know, not having to achieve the highest possible level, which they do not do. So, I don't know, what is everybody else's?
You know, the radio show, Lake Moby Kong, or every child is above average, you know, like, you know, so. So, 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 so that's what, I, I understand that's an aspirational level, you can leave it at that, and. What, how you define it is left to local, you know, teachers and because how they test it, because if I got all Ds. I still graduate, but I don't meet the, the max window. So if you say that is a clear, that is a threshold for clearing, then we're not actually meeting it, but that is aspirational one, that would fine.
Well, I, you know, I would say that because mastery has been part of the vernacular thus far. You are seeing schools that are changing grading practices as a result. So for example, Ds don't exist in a lot of schools anymore, and schools are changing their, their algorithms and their expectations as a result of that aspirational phrase. So whether or not, I, I say if we continue to use that, that positive change will continue to happen, and I, you know, I think that it has shown that it has, has. It's putting good positive results in, in play right now, not every, you can't just wave a magic wand and have every school be there right away, I think it needs support and resources. But I think it, it has shown that it's working thus far.
But is that mastery or grade inflation?
Yeah, um, hopefully it's, it's mastery, because it's not just about a percentage base, it's, you know, it's changing what's happening with assessment. And it's changing what's happening with feedback and conversation relative to that, so, you know, if you ask if there is grade inflation. You know, it's probably endemic in a lot of places. But I think with continued support and understanding of what the. But I think with continued support and understanding of what the aspirations are, we can get rid of that kind of stuff.
Fine, I think I'm fine with leaving it as mastery, you know, because, but that's a more gray area.
Yeah.
I don't know how to sup, how to support it if someone asks me, have I met mastery before you graduated? I have no idea how to justify it, but aspirationally is, you can leave it at that.
Well, and I think that's part of the problem we're contemplating here is that, you know, there's, there's a dictionary definition of mastery. If we go by the dictionary definition of mastery, then we would not be advancing a lot of things. You know, and I think that's just part of our concern here.
If it, if it helps, I mean, like, with the state assessments, right? So Mark, you put that state assessments, right? So we basically, our, our teacher group defines a score, like, there's a five-hundred scale score and you've gotta get a two-eighty to be proficient, right? So it's, it's a very objective, here's what proficiency means. But it's when we move it over into kind of the classroom realm that it's not so objective and clear is what you're saying, right? That.
Well, that's, I mean, that's a one-point time measure that.
It is, but it's pretty clear, like, this is, if you get two-eighty-one, you're provisioned, if you get two-eighty, you're not provisioned, whatever that, whatever that cut score is. Right, but, but it is the educators who are determining that cut score, that's.
Well, and that cut score is determined locally through.
No, no, the state one is, yeah, by all the, all the educators, right?
Well, yeah, and, and I mean, that's certainly a whole different conversation relative to what standardized tests actually measure. I know that's not what we're here for today.
Yeah, we're not talking about that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, proficiency is normal for that, you gotta go.
Yeah, I'm gonna go.
It's easy, man.
Yeah, I got logs that maybe you can have some set ones.
Yeah.
Um, so what do, what do you guys think? I'm, I'm fine with it, it's mastery, um, yeah.
I have some concerns.
I hear what you're saying, Mark, though, I mean, I think the hope would be if we don't have kids, everybody achieving actual mastery and practice immediately, um, that over time you create a, a mentality at the district level that, hey, you know what? We gotta get these kids to actual mastery. So we're gonna just keep, over time, slowly pushing our standards up. And I think there's value in that, so, I hear what you're saying there. I'm not opposed to it at all, I just wanna make sure, we, we really didn't wanna make sure we didn't have a rule in place that, you know, in a future board and a future commissioner down the road got districts in trouble by somebody at the top at the state level saying, and it says here, you gotta promote kids on mastery, your kids are only proficient, so you can't promote these kids, right? That's what we were concerned about, but if the field wants to add it mastery and thinks that's gonna push standards up, I'm okay with that.
I like his reference to, to not being aspirational. And it would be nice if in the minimum standards, we'd say in some language that was, uh, this, this language is, is to try and incentivize aspiration.
I don't know, John Hart will give me that.
I don't think they'll let us do that. Thanks a lot, Mark.
Thank you.
Pretty soon, before she rolls out of here, so we can summarize where we are then, because it sounded like we're kind of wrapped for now. We're on page sixty-six. Um, truthfully, the remainder, there's not a bunch of gnarly stuff left in the remainder of the document.
Those one mixes, you know, is one credit course or one-year course or something like that?
Yeah, well, we'll get to there, you don't, we're not, I'm, so what I'm gonna suggest is, um, that's where we pick up, those we'll pick up at sixty-six. And then there are certain things that you all have said, like, let's revisit this, so we'll take those back, try and get some proposed language for you. Um, and then hopefully at this upcoming board meeting, you'll be able to kinda, we'll have some language for you, some rest of through, and then you might even be able to knock out and.
You should be able to finish the rest.
Finish the rest of it pretty quickly from pages sixty-six onward is what we'll, hopefully we'll aspire to.
Yeah, I mean, we still have two cents and stuff we've got out of the class, but actually, but.
That's what I'm saying, like, some of the stuff that we've done, we'll come back with, with language and stuff like that for the stuff you guys think, like, let's think about it a little bit.
Well, you have a lot of global fight and replace to do here, isn't it? Courses and learning opportunities and mastery, mastery and competency.
All right. So everybody good?
Yeah.
Lewis, you have a German?
Yes, some more.
Okay.
Okay.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right.
Glad to see you, Phil.
Good to see you, thank you. Take it, Phil.